All right, we are ready to get started. Our first day of the city council budget retreat. Thank you all for being here. Today is Thursday, April 25th, 2024. I'm calling the meeting to order and giving notice that members of the city count, two members of the city council and the general public, that we may vote to go into executive session, which will not be open to the public, for discussion and consultation with the city's attorneys for legal advice on any item listed on the following agenda. We have roll call. Mayor Daggett here.
Vice Mayor Asland.
Your.
Councilmember Harris. Councilmember House. Councilmember Matthews.
Here.
Councilmember McCarthy.
Your.
Councilmember Sweet. All right, um. Councilmember Matthews, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Be glad to stand up as your able. As allegiance to the United States of America.
Uh, Councilmember McCarthy, would you be able to read our mission statement?
Be able. Mission of the city of Flagstaff. Protect and enhance the small neighborhood for all.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Sweet, would you be willing to read the land acknowledgement?
My honor. The Flagstaff City Council humbly acknowledges the ancestral homelands of this area's indigenous stewards. These lands still inhabited by native descendants border mountains sacred to indigenous. Sorry. Their legacies, their traditions, and their continued contributions. We celebrate their past, present, and will forever know this place as home.
Mayor. Thank you. All right, let's, let's get into it.
You for me, Mayor?
Yes.
Good morning, everybody. Ah, we have a full house. We also have a special guest. CJ, would you like to introduce our special guest today? And we'll put him on the spot in this room full of grownups.
You can go.
This is where it gets real, Carter. Um, it's good to have you here, everybody, uh, on this beautiful Thursday. Um, Brett Clifton, your city manager. In a minute, I'll introduce our facilitator. Um, I want to just turn up by saying how important this retreat is today and tomorrow. Is that this is a two-day retreat? This kind of represents the final stretch of our budget process. We'll have a few more matters, uh, and, and housekeeping matters and, and really the formal adoption of our budget. That comes later. Uh, but, uh, you know, these retreats and we started out, um, for the year and then retreated in February and then had our capital improvements retreat earlier. Was it in April or late March? I don't know. March, okay. And here we are now, a long process between the retreats, a lot of work going on. The, um, the finance team, uh, who represents a good part of our budget team and very busy. All the divisions have been, uh, busy as well. I just want to thank the entire staff for all the work that's gone into this. I especially want to point out Heidi Derry Berry and Brandy, Brandy Suda. I'm having a hard time talking already. Rick Tatter and the finance people and the entire budget team, who have been working very hard on behalf of the entire organization, putting together everything that we'll be hearing about today. So let's, uh, give it up for that group. We'll get an introduction of the budget team a little bit later, I, I believe. I just wanted to welcome you here and, um, talk briefly about what lies ahead. You know, during these budget retreats, we don't have a lot of protocol in place. Uh, the mayor, we're grateful that she hands it over to us to kind of aiding, um, if people have questions, you know, we're a little bit free flowing during these retreats. You can ask your questions. I will just raise your hand if you will, so we can see you and we'll acknowledge you. And, uh, do we still need to come to the front of the room to get this? Yes, we do. So we have a microphone up here. We, we, the mic in the back works, but I think we have it inactive because it will pick up all the discussions at your tables.
Turn it on.
Yeah, right? We'd love to hear what you're talking about, Becky. Especially you, Sam Beckett, in the very back. Um, but no, uh, just to keep the record clean, uh, in terms of not having a lot of clutter or background noise, we just operate with this mic. So if you're asking a question or you have a comment or we're asking you something, find your way somewhere up in proximity to this and, and speak loudly and we'll pick it up because this is a recorded meeting. Um, last night I got pinged from my phone at, uh, 1:22 AM. And, and so, you know, you, you get pinged at 1:22 AM. It was like, okay, what's going on? I get this email. No subject, comes from an individual named David Edward. Readings to you and your family. Have you received the compensation money I sent to you through my secretary Frank Donald? Donald misspelled Frank with a lowercase f. Did you get that also? I got it.
Damn.
And didn't know, like, what, how to respond, of course, not thinking clearly at 1:22 AM. So I gave it my best. And I said, Dear Mr. Edward, please instruct your secretary Frank Donald to, uh, send my personal account in, I will, to, to contact me for my personal account information and we can work out the details. Hello is my personal number where you can reach me at any time. Thank you very much, CJ Parry. CJ's out of the room. Probably getting a call. There you have it. In a second, I'm going to introduce our facilitator. Just wondering if there's any, I needed to go over the agenda. Um, so, yeah.
Clicker.
I've got the clicker.
Got the power.
Yeah, that's a concern. I have the clicker, but Stacy has the power.
Try it again.
For you'd be nothing without the team.
I would be nothing without the team. I, I remind myself of that at least once a day. I think we went over this today. Uh, you know, as always in these retreats, we're at high level. Um, but we have the entire staff here. If we need to get into the weeds on something, you've got the experts in the room. The answer is always in the room. Uh, it is a complex process with multiple components. We try to keep it very digestible for you. Uh, great amount of staff discussion to get here. I think I touched on that. Uh, we're not here to solve problems. We're here to build framework. Um, that's the importance of these retreats. Lucid but succinct. I don't know where that one came from, but I really like it. Um, we want to, this to be engaged. We want everybody to, uh, weigh in as you feel the need or the desire. And please be succinct, which I'm not. Uh, and Jeff will help us stay on track. Thank you, Jeff. So just an overview of the agenda. We have a detailed agenda in front of you with all the specifics and those who will be presenting. But in general terms, uh, we'll start out as we always do with a budget overview, kind of a roadmap, how we got here, where we're going. Then we'll hear about revenue updates. This is always important because it's always changing. So, uh, we'll have updates. Then we're going to get into the meat of it. We'll be talking about, uh, renewed investment in our employees. We will be hearing from our employee advisory committee, who, by the way, has a seat at our budget team and is integrated into this process throughout. Uh, we'll talk about new budget appropriations. We'll talk a little bit about our capital improvements program. Council had a large dose of that at the March retreat, uh, but we'll recap on some things. External funding opportunities. Tomorrow, tomorrow will not be a full day, we don't think. Uh, we like to be a little bit nimble with these agendas. So what, if we get ahead of schedule, it'll end sooner tomorrow. If we get behind, tomorrow is a bit of a relief valve. However, we need to adjust, we'll do so. We'll talk about key community priorities, five-year plan outlook. And then we always end up getting into our council parking lot, uh, where we talk about things that we haven't talked about, but council would like to have some discussion on. So there's always opportunity for that. And with that, I am going to, once again, pull up this bio on our wonderful facilitator, Jeff Kennedy. I'd like to touch on this bio because I think it's such a nice read. Jeff Kennedy, uh, with, uh, the Lancaster Group will be facilitating. Jeff brings to us 17 years of experience as a pastor, motivational speaker and facilitator. The past seven years, he's been the lead pastor of the First Missionary Baptist Church here in Flagstaff. His sermon is all about budget. 25 years, 25 years of experience in the radio industry. Jeff also brings a nice radio voice, includes a hosting of, of a variety of shows, including news talk, sports talk. Jeff, we've already ascertained that you're not a Broncos fan. But I want to know, are you a Nuggets fan? And before you answer, think about this. The Nuggets have already won two games, uh, so far in the, the playoffs. And last year they played the Lakers and swept them. We don't know what's going to happen, but how do you feel about the Nuggets?
Um, I'm still not a Nuggets fan and that is a sore spot. So I'm going to try to just like lick my wounds before I get up and say anything else.
All right. Well, you're forgiven.
Yeah.
Um, sports talk and of course religious themed programming. 25 years experience in retail management. Jeff is also a DEI diversity, equity, and inclusion trainer and coach. Uh, I will say that I had the honor of sitting in on one of your sessions a week or two ago, uh, at the city along with a number of other people. And it was wonderful, Jeff. Uh, so thank you. Um, and a veteran of the United States Air Force service. Thank you very much for your service experience as a linguist. Jeff has made his life's passion and mission to encourage others and to fight for equity of all, regardless of gender, race, religion, or sexual orientation. Let's give Jeff a warm welcome.
Thank you, thank you for that. And, uh, I don't know how much I appreciate the, the dig on the Lakers, but you know, you're forgiven. So good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mayor Daggett, Vice Mayor Asland, City Council. Thank you very much. And it's good to see everyone again. And before we get into the program for today, I'm going to call it that. A couple of things to remember. I'm going to do everything I can to keep us on pace, maybe get us out a few minutes early. So if you start to be a little bit long at the five-minute mark, I'll stand up. Remember over here. And if you get in kind of that one-minute window, I'll walk back towards the door. That's your cue to wrap it up. I won't do things, you know, those nonverbal cues like, you know, those are annoying. So I'll just get up and move around the room and that'll be, that'll be your cue. That is time to wrap up. Okay, everybody agree with that?
Yeah.
We good? All right, so I was going to do really cool activity. I don't want to take the time to that. So I'm going to, I'm going to ask you a quick question and I want you to jot this down for me. And then in a moment, I'm going to ask several of you to share, probably maybe a person on each row. So all of us, when we wake up in the morning, we should wake up with an enthusiasm, with an excitement about the day. And most of us probably have a mantra, right? We have some personal mantra or a quote. Maybe you don't have a regular quote that you, that you use every day, but maybe something that came to mind this morning. So if you would, take 120 seconds and write down either a personal mantra of yours or a quote that you heard today or recently that meant something to you. Ready, go.
You can't use the one we use this week because I aren't using.
I guess I probably should have started with a question like, everyone has a personal mantra or two or 10, right? No. They tend to kind of change over the, over the years. All right, about another minute. All right, everybody have something? All right, so what I'm going to do, I'm going to start with the back of the room and work forward. So along that back row, who would like to volunteer, before I volunteer you, to stand up and tell me your mantra or your quote for today?
Sam Beckett.
And I realize that, so. Good, very good. You're part of something good. Anyone else on the back row? One more person.
Sam.
Sam.
We aren't of remembrance.
Really good. That's good. Thank you. All right, next row. Let's move quick. Next, next row. Very good. Thank you. Some, someone else on that row? Just because you're looking down doesn't mean I'm not going to call on you. How that works. There you go. All right. That's good. Are you can write these down, okay? Next time someone asks you the question, you can, you can say it like you thought of it. Next, next row. Work hard, play hard, be good. All right, I'm going to use that. I would definitely say that like I thought of it. Someone else on that row? Yes. 1% better, very good. All right, next row. Communicate and understand your intent. Nice. Someone else? Say that again? Always do your best. All right. Next row.
I say to my boss regularly, let it go.
He's five times a day.
You know, that one works unless it's your kids telling you that. Probably doesn't go over quite as well. Anyone else on that row?
So this is going to be odd. You were sitting on. Let it go.
It's funny that we all work together.
Yeah, yeah. Let it go. I, you know, I hear you saying that out loud and someone's supposed to receive that, right? That wasn't very subtle. All right, up front, let's, let's start here.
Well, as I do every morning lately, looking at my itinerary for my upcoming trip, I've lived my best life ever.
Hey, very good. Anyone else over here?
Well, I recently read this in a book and I kind of stuck with me. Says, if you're enough lucky to be Irish, you're lucky enough.
I just start off by saying you've got this.
Nice. Okay, you do. You've got this. All right, over here. Come to you guys.
This one we used this week, so people have heard it. Uh, the future starts today, not tomorrow. Pope John Paul II.
Be gentle with yourself and strive to be happy.
Very good. Very good.
A calm sea does not a skilled sailor make.
Calm sea does not a skilled sailor make?
Correct.
Fine, that's good. Good, that's good.
It came on a 14th, it stuck with me.
Took your exercise literally. Uh, every morning I say to myself when I wake up, it's way too early. What follows that? I'm just curious. Uh, the snooze button. Mayor Daggett.
Uh, strong leaders engage their critics and make themselves stronger. Weak leaders silence their critics and make themselves weaker.
All right, very good. Very good. Hey, Jeff, everybody, thank you. Did anything, does anyone, like you heard, we went around the room. Did something grab anyone? Yeah. What? Which book grabbed you? Read the plaque. The others. I'm surprised everyone didn't say let it go. So. So I found this quote this morning. It's from, uh, Patrick, Patrick Lencioni. Says, success is not a matter of mastering subtle sophisticated theory, but rather of embracing common sense with uncommon levels of discipline and persistence. And I truly believe that. And, and one of the things, and I have, I have a number of mantras that, that I live by. You know, I start with, with a scripture quote each morning. But something hit me because people will tell you, and sometimes we tell people that, you know, it's the, it's the meanest in the fight or the, or, or the, the, the craziest in the fight or the biggest in the fight that wins the fight. I always live by this mantra. It's not the biggest, the meanest, the craziest who wins the fight. The best fighter means trust your training, trust your discipline, trust the process, and you will succeed in most battles. So with that, let's get started. Uh, we're going to stay on point. Are we? We're pretty much right on time. We're going to have to pick up about five minutes, okay? So, uh, we'll start out budget overview. Derry Berry. You guys.
Morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Heidi Derry Berry, the city's Assistant Finance Director. Here this morning just to talk about a few, um, overview items, kind of, as Greg said, where we've been and where we are now. So if you recall, back in December was our first retreat where we kicked off this budget cycle. Um, then in February, the budget team was back, um, for the second retreat. Not on here is in March, we did have the, um, capital retreat. Division review. So in, end of February, beginning of March, budget team and the rest of the organization spent three entire weeks meeting, talking about budget, everything that you will see as, um, request items as well as needs. We spent a good three weeks together. Budget team was in this room actually, that whole time. And then today, we're here in April. We are here this morning, um, to present the city managers recommended budget to the council. So you will hear lots of good stuff over the next two days. Um, and then from here, the next time you'll see us as well, we'll actually be presenting, um, to you in June for tentative and final budget adoption. So again, I'd like to echo Greg's, thank you for everyone, um, that has worked together. It's a lot of work. Okay, well, so next is the budget approach that the city, um, the budget team kind of took for how we approached this year's budget process. So the first item we had, um, which was very important to us, obviously, is compensation and benefits. And the little smiley face is because we felt that we accomplished this. Now, we can't do everything, um, but we have done a lot in this area this year. The second is key community priorities and objectives. Um, we've advanced a number of items, um, in these areas. You'll hear a lot about priorities tomorrow. Next one is our basic services and operational needs. I think as you've heard for many years, we have not been able to meet our ongoing operational needs with the money. We made a huge stride in that this year. We did some interesting analysis and made some changes and we were able to move a big chunk of our ongoing operational needs into that ongoing budget. Um, you'll hear a lot more about that when we're presented to you. Infrastructure needs. Another thing that we have, um, had a large need. We are advancing a lot of things in the IT infrastructure, facilities, and fleet this year that we felt smiley face. The carbon neutrality plan. Again, we've done a lot to advance this. You'll hear more, um, about that later today as well as the housing 10-year plan. So, um, there's been a lot that has gone into this budget and we feel as a budget team that we've hit on a lot of our key items that we had hoped to accomplish this year. I wouldn't be up here if I didn't talk about color of money every time. So just a reminder, we do have the color of money in the conversations. Um, so just keeping that in the back of your mind as we're talking about. We have to present. Did I get our five minutes back?
You did.
Okay. And Rick Tatter is going to come talk about revenue. Thank you.
Here, Vice Mayor, City Council, Rick Tatter, Vice Service Director. Good to see you today. Uh, my theory is going to be pretty brief. There's not a lot of information to share. As far as updates, I actually have my slides out of order, so I'm going to back and forth a little bit. You're putting them together, you just don't think about the order sometimes. So I want to talk about investing employees. No, I don't. Here we go. I'm just going to give you a brief revenue update. Uh, the main movement we had since the February retreat was within our general fund. Some estimates of revenues in that fund, uh, and the outlook for that area. So we, we're coming with you with some good news, uh, as far as resources available that we as a budget team were able to use with our budget discussions, um, during those three weeks and, and made some good strides to, uh, a better budget. Uh, the last, uh, estimates were provided in February and those were based on January's numbers, um, that we had. So it's always a timing issue as far as when we get these numbers in. Uh, we continue to see some, some good growth in many categories of our city sales tax and even our state shared, uh, sale, sales tax revenues also. Um, so things are still going positively, even a little better than what we saw in, in that retreat. There were some categories that had some small minor adjustments downward in our sales tax. Uh, that was our lodging, uh, hotel motel, short-term rentals, those taxes, uh, as well as publishing and advertising. But those are smaller revenues, so they didn't really have a big impact on our estimates, but we do see a little bit of, of variation. Not everything is positive. Well, we do see a projected resource available, uh, that we did use as a budget team, about 485,000. And really, our number one goal is compensation. We really rolled that into the compensation plan, which you'll hear more, uh, after this presentation, uh, from our HR team and so forth. Uh, so it was good news. Uh, we're, we're still doing well in our, in our general fund. So here's, here's the report by categories. Uh, you can see lots of positives. There's a couple of flat areas, uh, but the main positives were in the contracting sales tax. Uh, as we see buildings still going on, construction going on. That one continues to be strong in our community, uh, getting those sales tax as well as retail. Retail just continues to exceed our projections, has been doing well. Uh, so those were the main areas that we saw growth. Uh, the bottom areas, the ones I just talked about with the hotel motels and the miscellaneous revenues categories. Overall, about 391,000 here in growth in the current year, which is then projected out for the future years. Uh, so good news. The next slide is for our state shared revenue. I knew that would go. It's a delay.
It's a delay.
It's rolling me off a little bit. There. Uh, just a quick update on state shared revenues. Um, these are the four state share revenues that come to the general fund. Our sales tax, urban revenue, which is income tax, as well as auto lieu tax, a registration tax. Here you see a little bit of upward movement on the state shared revenues for sales tax. Uh, we also heard this when we got an update from, um, a finance committee at the state. They did see some growth in their revenues, uh, a little bit in the sales tax revenues as well as, uh, income tax. I'll talk about that in just a minute. Uh, so we did move our projections upward just a little bit. Everything else, we, we stayed pretty flat. Uh, so that's where you see the 100,000 there. And I just wanted to show. And I just wanted to show you again, next year's impact. We talked about this in, in February, about the state shared urban revenue or income tax. This is where we, we saw the biggest struggle this year with, with growth in revenues. It's actually declined about a million dollars to our general fund. But we were able to manage that and work through it because of growth in other areas and so forth. But we're still on that number. We have a balanced budget that addresses that for our community. And things are looking okay in that category for now. So talking about the state budget side of things, you know, heard lots of conversation about them being a billion dollars behind in their revenues for the coming year. Their revenues were not meeting their projections that they had. I think they're pretty progressive on their revenue ask, honestly. And they really anticipate a lot of growth. And they didn't quite see the income tax decline based on their decision of the 2.5% flat tax. They finally started seeing numbers as far as what people are withholding, how tax returns are coming in. And those were a couple of things that really hit the revenue side of, of their operations. As well, some expenditures were exceeding what they were expecting. The school voucher system was one of those things that's a little bit more than, than what they anticipated when they adopted the budget. So now they gotta manage that ongoing expectation within their budget. Currently, they're at about $1.8 billion shortfall. This is actually a little better. It's a big number, but a little better than it was back last fall when they were really struggling with this. And they were about 2.2 billion back then. So they had some gains, which is good to see for our state. But they've got a lot of decisions to make in the, in the coming weeks. We haven't heard much on their budget talks because of a, an issue, like 1864, that they're dealing with. Really, that put the budget talks on the back burner. We did hear, hear movements that yesterday, the House has put some legislation through, and we'll see what the Senate does next week. And maybe they can get back on track for their budget conversations. But it's early for us to see if, if, if they will have any impact on us. I hope not. We'll, we'll see over the coming months. They got a lot of work to do down at the state at this time. So with that, that's the quick revenue update for today. The next section is gonna be about, that's a lot of our, our resources for the budget cycle. Any questions on revenue updates? Great. Right, moving on.
Thanks, Rick.
Good morning, everyone. Mayor Vice Mayor Council, Jennifer Caputo and the interim HR Director for the city. And I'd like to thank you for spending some time with me this morning as we talk about the budget team's recommendations relating to investing in our employees. As you'll see in the slides ahead, the past allocations that the council has approved have made a positive impact. You'll also see that we maintained a focus on enhancing our compensation and benefits package. The general fund received 37.33 requests for new positions this year. Our resources were limited due to ongoing capacity that was reduced. So we were able to recommend approval of just over four FTE. And I want to point out a few of these positions specifically. The first of which is Mayor Dear to My Heart. It's a human resources generalist. We've had an increased need in the organization for not only recruitment activities, but also classification and compensation. So we recommended the inclusion of a human resources generalist. The second one I wanted to point out is the budget director. We've seen an increased need within the organization to dedicate resources to focus on budget processes and efficiencies year round. Approval of a budget director who could lead the new budget, budget section will create a dedicated team that is focused on analysis and projections. And the team will also be responsible for priority-based budget, user studies, new oversight and cost recovery. We have seen an increase in the incidents at the main library. It's doubled over the past year. And we saw the need for an increased security of the library. So we recommended a full-time police aide that would be stationed at the library. In other funds, we had just over seven requests and we included five FTE. Again, I'll point out a few, the first of which is related to tourism at the airport. And you'll see that we're recommending a mini visitor center at the airport with a grab and go service for travelers. So these two positions would support that function out at the airport. The water services operators are contingent on a rate study, so those are to be determined. The sustainability specialist, one is grant funded and the other is for grant writing assistance. And then the housing navigator is something that we should all be able to celebrate as this was the last ongoing position that was funded with one-time dollars. In terms of reclassifications, we received 28 requests and recommended 13 to move forward, with seven in the general fund and five in other funds. This next slide takes us through the history of our overall number of FTEs. The left-hand side shows the number of FTEs. The bottom shows the fiscal year. And the bars reflect the number of each, the FTE each year. So considering the changes this year, our number would grow to 972.6. And as the slide shows, what you'll see is that we've been on an increasing trend almost every year except for 2021, since the fiscal year 2014. So continuing to grow. This is a snapshot of the general fund expenditure budget. And what we wanted to share on this slide is that the general fund allocates almost 70% to personnel. Now, we're gonna move into some recruitment trends. And overall, you see things that have done in the past have had a positive impact on our workforce. Turnover has improved just slightly and our vacancy rate has decreased. And although you'll see the number of separations increase between 2022 and 2023, you'll also note that we had an increased number of temporary and contract separations. So that could account for that number. These next few slides are representative of exit interview data. So these are questions that are asked of people who are leaving the organization. On this particular slide, the left-hand side represents the percentage rating and the bottom indicates the items being rated. And really, what I want to point out here is that we continue to see that better pay and/or benefits continues to be the primary reason that people are leaving our organization. This slide dives a little deeper into our benefits. And on the left-hand side, again, you see the percentage, the bottom with the benefit being rated. And the right-hand side shows the scale. We're gonna be looking at the green bar, that's the excellent rating. And what you'll see on this slide is there are VeriClinic. Our dental program and wellness program are most highly rated with health, vision and life insurance following. And this next year, we're gonna be moving from, with, through NAPEPT, we're gonna be moving from Siegel to another administrator for our benefits. We're looking forward to continuing to improve, enhance our benefits and also looking into some additional supplemental benefits that we can offer to employees. When we look at more closely at our compensation ratings, we see that we're all rated poorly. But again, we recognize that better pay is still one of the primary reasons that people are leaving our organization. We continue to focus on improvements in this area as you'll see what is being brought to you for consideration for this upcoming year. And as demonstrated by our improved turnover and vacancy rates, we are making forward progress, as you will see in the results of our all-employees survey on the next slide. The past few slides, employees exiting the information, uh, organization. And this one's reflecting the all-employees that responded to our survey in 2023. And again, you'll see that what we're doing is making a positive impact. So the left portion of the graph is trends over time. And what you'll see is that we're on an upward trend. The number 2.77% is reflective of all of the categories from strongly agree to strongly disagree. So everything together, a 2.77%. And again, that's on an upward trend. It's the highest we've seen throughout the time that we've been doing these surveys since 2017. And then on the middle right, you'll see that 34% agree or disagree. But what I really want to point out is that that is a 10% increase from the last survey we did in 2019. So again, showing us that we are making progress and positive improvements. Next, we're gonna move on to our traction trends between 2021 and 2023. In 2023, we hired 359 employees. 72 of those were internal movements. And that's 20% of the total people we hired were from the, within the organization. And the remaining 287 were filled with external candidates. So we continue to see an increased number of positions as our FTE count continues to grow. We do see that the number of job offers being declined is staying fairly steady. The majority of people that are not accepting offers is due to accepting another offer. So reflecting on this from an HR perspective, I think that we really have the opportunity to take a deeper dive into our recruitment process and see what we can do to speed up that process, make it more efficient, more effective, and get candidates on board before they get offers from other organizations. So all of the information that I've just talked about is related to investing in our employees. And it brings us to our recommendations for this year. As we took a look at the recommendations this year, there were several things the budget team kept in mind, such as focusing on market, market competitive pay, consideration of potential leave benefit changes, ongoing funding for merit and pay for performance increases, maintaining cost share levels for benefit coverage, continuing to address starting wage to be higher than the local minimum wage and identifying recruitment opportunities to ensure competitiveness. So let's move into the recommendations. Our health insurance increase is 1.5% this year. And that'll apply across the board to all medical plans. Again, we're looking at funding 100% for base plan employee-only coverage for those that are participating in the wellness program. We did not have any increase to dental or vision premiums. And so the cost for that is 115,000. And then I am going to turn things over to our interim class and comp manager, extraordinary Jessica, who is going to talk about the class, uh, compensation recommendations.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council members. As Jen said, I'm the interim HR manager for classification and compensation. As you've heard multiple times, compensation remains a top priority in the employee survey, within the exit interviews and within the feedback we receive. While we do still have some great needs in this area, there have been some really impactful recommendations that you'll see in the proposed budget. The first, which is an incredible accomplishment of the budget team, is the ongoing funding of merit increases. And ongoing is the key word there. The approval of the ongoing merit increases benefits the organization for several reasons, including retention, motivation, market competitiveness, employee morale and cost of living. Ongoing merit increases are important for fostering a positive work environment, retaining top talent and ensuring the long-term success of team flagstaff. Another recommendation you'll see is the adjustment to, an increase to the starting wage adjustment with flagstaff minimum wage increasing at an accelerated rate and the increasing cost of living. The new starting wage that team flagstaff is proposing is $18.50. This impacts three of our pay plans. In the regular pay plan, it impacts our bottom five grades, so 05R through 25R and the firefighter pay range, as well as our temporary pay plan. Should flagstaff minimum wage increase above $18.50 on January 1st, additional recommendations will be made to address that adjustment. Over the last few years, the city has transitioned to market-based pay. We've heard that term quite a bit recently. But market-based pay, also known as market-driven pay, is a compensation strategy where wages, salaries and other forms of compensation offered to employees are primarily based on market factors. This means we're setting our rates based on prevailing market conditions for rate, for similar jobs in the industry, geographic location and other relevant factors. Market-based pay helps our organization remain competitive and ensuring our compensation packages are attractive enough to recruit and retain employees. The city uses a consistent methodology to ensure equity within the process of classification recommendations. The proposal this year is to include market adjustments to specific positions rather than full pay plans. This methodology is to ensure that we're focusing on the positions that are farthest behind the market. Some positions in our organization are at or close to the market. So spending the available dollars towards the greatest need of the organization was our focus. We're identifying a greatest need as any position that's seven and a half percent below market. And as additional funds become available, we plan to address additional positions that are seven and a half percent or less behind the market. Our HR team is committed to reviewing at least 25% of our positions within the city. This year, we're currently on track to review 43% of positions. And the intent is to continue reviewing and adjusting positions with the $250,000 that's in the proposed budget to address the tensions. Overall, the total employee investment, not including reclassifications or new positions, is $5.1 million. This continued investment in employees supports our council goal of being an inclusive employer of choice by providing employees with the necessary tools, training, support and compensation. This investment will have a positive ripple effect throughout the city, supporting economic growth, improving quality of life for residents and enhancing the city's overall competitiveness and sustainability. That's all I have.
Jeff, we're doing good time-wise?
We are, we're doing great.
I would like to hopefully spark a little bit of discussion. And I'm wondering, are you able to drive in reverse on this thing? Can you go back to that slide from the employee surveys? Got a few graphics on it. Jen touched on it briefly.
A few more facts.
Perfect. You so much. Mayor, Council and, and for everybody here. Looks like a busy slide, but there's so much information here. I think I should start by giving some props to CJ and the, the team. We're taking the results of this survey and we had shy of 400 participants. You're about a good survey and we do these every few years, but we had like over a thousand comments from that sampling and the IT team utilized some AI assistance in compiling narrative. And then of course, we have the numeric ranking as well. So there's just a wealth of information in this. I think it's really important because preceding this slide, Jen Caputo talked about exit surveys. And exit surveys are very important to us because they tell us why are people leaving the organization? But it's obvious with with that particular sampling, we are targeting on people who have already made a decision to leave. And so I think the data oftentimes, as you expect, is going to be a little bit skewed toward some negative reasons and you would expect that to be the case. Not always. I mean, sometimes it's retirement or other things. This is more telling because this is a survey, as Jen mentioned, of all employees across the entire organization. It's, you know, asking many questions about how people feel about their work, their work environment, compensation and so forth. It's more than just compensation. It's everything. It is the reason, part of the reason, a big part of the reason that, you know, we talk about employees' achievements in our managers report and the deputy manager Shannon in particular is every couple of weeks provides counsel with our employee anniversaries. And all the recognitions that that go on, the words of excellence and so forth. It's ongoing and it's very exciting. Well, you know, in part, we're doing what we can to address employee recognition, which in turn ties to survey results from the past. These surveys are very important to us and we look at the leadership team that we look at these results. And by the way, the results of this survey were rolled out to the EAC, the Employee Advisory City Council Committee recently and they are currently looking these over. So it's very transparent and we eventually, I think, will be giving council some overviews of the survey. You're just getting a little snippet of it right here. But there is some positive things here that weren't some elaboration here. If you look at the graph on the left, we're trending upward. That's a very important graph for us is what we want to look at. We're never going to check boxes on on these things. It's always a trend. What's the trend? Are people beginning to feel better about certain things or are we losing ground? In general terms, we saw a lot of positive trends coming from this survey. So even though on if you shift to the right and you look at that lower bar graph on the right and you'll see that, oh boy, you know, on compensation, or is this retention, based upon compensation, you know, the last colored bar on that is where we are and that's not good. That's that's making the lowest. However, the trend is positive. So you take those things and you reconcile them together. Yeah, we continue to score low, but we're doing better. And I think that's an important takeaway here and you can't see it, but in the middle of that graph is a percentage, not the 34%, but next to it, you'll see in like green positive 10%. So we've improved 10% from the last time this survey went out. By the way, we're asking kind of the same questions each survey. And as Jen mentioned, they go out every two to three years. So we're making ground and that's what I want council to take away from this is we're not seeing the rankings yet that we'd like to see, but we're seeing a positive trend, which is really important. And I wanted to back up and talk about this because it underlies everything that's coming to you today as we talk about retention, recruitment, compensation and all of these things, investing in our employees. This is our report card and I think it's to note that we're making progress. As this council in particular, the council before it, yes, but this council in particular, over the last couple of years has made big investments in our employees, big investments, and we're asking for more of that this year. And I just want you to understand as as you're hearing all this data and seeing the suggestions coming forward, the report card shows that we're heading in a good direction. Now, some other takeaways here. You know, recruitment, as you heard from from Jen, remains a big challenge for us. It remains a big challenge for all employers right now. We're just no different. It crosses the spectrum. There are areas where, you know, we're having more than usual challenges and those are the ones we give some special attention to. A few years ago, we talked about, you know, vacancy rates in dispatch. We've had large vacancy rates in law enforcement. This year, we have a huge vacancy rate in our human resource. It's circumstantial. We've had a number of retirements. We've had some loss, unfortunately. And people moving on. But it's a division right now in the organization that is getting special attention because it's over 50% vacant right now. So we have been fortunate to bring in help. People who have retired, have unretired, they're helping us out as consultants. People have moved on to other divisions are back helping us. Thank you, fire department for giving us Jessica's services for a bit. We have an interim director, Allison, who has been wonderful. But there you have it. We can go on and on with examples. The takeaway is there are areas in the organization where recruitment, vacancy and recruitment hand in hand, remain a bit of a challenge. Another one that I'll mention briefly that is a work in progress is our project management. And that one is gets an asterisk next to it because you already know how many capital projects are happening in the city and how many are going to happen. We're going into it right now. We have four vacancies with project managers. So we're scrambling. So it remains a challenge. It's something where we need to focus on. And that brings us back to the class and comp discussion and other things. But there are, again, there are positives to note. One positive that Jen mentioned and I'll echo it is going to an ongoing basis. I guess Jessica mentioned it for pay for performance. It used to be fiscal year, we budgeted for it, then it was in the five-year plan. Well, now it's in the indefinite plan. We have instituted pay for performance and we will do it every year. That gives our employees a lot of assurance that there will be upward adjustments to try to stay, not just the market adjustments, but performance-based adjustments to try to stay competitive. Last thing I want to mention, I know this is a mouthful here, minimum wage remains a big factor for us. That is one where we don't have discretion. It's the law and we of course abide by it and we of course are impacted by it like all employers in the So that graphic that you saw with the lower tier pay ranges all moving up, that's a big deal for us and and it is for all employers, but we are making adjustments in these lower pay grades just to try to stay parallel with what's happening with minimum wage, which is edging upward. And by when I talk about that, I'm now referring to our wages as starting wages because we are ahead of the minimum wage and we need to stay ahead of the minimum wage, not by much, but a little bit. So as it goes up, we make adjustments in the lower pay grades. Arguably, it has a ripple effect throughout the organization, but this year we're focusing on the lower pay grade. And thank you for that.
No questions? You covered it. The slide that showed our starting wage at 18D. You mentioned something about firefighters, like how are they in that range?
So in their pay plan, previously their starting wage was $18.19 and in order to build equity to bring them up to the recommended starting wage of 1850, we needed to adjust that range to make sure their starting wage was at least 1850.
So in and out pays $23 an hour and we're paying our firefighters 1850?
Starting wage for firefighters.
Not surprising. I'm hoping we'll find out more information over the next two days. Housing navigator, one-time monies. I think we all agree that we need a lot more movement in housing. It is one of our crises. Everybody who lives here or decides not to live here is the housing. So I'm hoping to hear why it's only a one FTE increase. The 23.87 turnover rate is not great. Cost to onboard an employee, a lot more than that. And also, yeah, you know, upward trends, I'm happy to hear that, but 10% over five years is not impressive at all for me. So I think as we go, I'm glad you guys were first because as we go through this budget see some of the recommended expenses. Just so you know, I'm thinking of, okay, it's non-critical. Because if we don't have employees in procurement and project management, we can't do these other things. And so I'm feeling like we're a little out of balance because until we get solid employees that are here long enough to make an impact, we can't do these other things. So I tell you, I'm a little disappointed, even though we are improving, that not doing better. And I'm not saying that to you guys. It's not your fault. I'm just, I'm just saying it out loud. So I'll be anxious to see how we progress over these next two days, but I'm glad we're making a focus and we are emphasizing our employees. But when I look at the charts and statistics is one of my most hated things because, you know, it can be skewed to make anything look bad or good. But in the exit surveys, you could combine a lot of those together, like, well, they took another job, but in flag staff, because if they take another job somewhere else or if it's in fact, flag staff may be okay, but if it's, no, I'm not coming up here, it was still because of housing. Sure, because of lack of compensation. So when you combine those probabilities, that percentage that are not coming to work for us because of our compensation and the cost of housing is much greater than what that chart said. So I just wanted to, and one last thing I'm going to point out, just as a unintended consequence, maybe as we make decisions in the future, hearing that we have to hire a police aide because of increased activity and danger in our library is other things that we make decisions on that has created that risk to our employees. And so I think that was, I just wanted to point that out because I think that as other things come up that we make decisions on, this is an unintended consequence that then is created in a different environment and is costing safety to our employees plus expense to our bottom line. So that's all I have to say.
I have a couple of questions as well. Have you ever asked in employee surveys how individual employees are impacted by staffing levels in their departments?
Specifically, I mean, we do ask a question about workload and burnout. So I mean, I think that we could probably pull data from that, but we could definitely ask more specifically for that information.
I would just be, we talk about it so often, how many positions we have open. I'd be interested in seeing what the actual impact on existing employees is by that lack of.
We definitely hear it informally all the time. I know that it's something that is significant within the organization, especially with within certain areas.
Yeah, and maybe when we roll this out with council, we'll have discussions on the survey, as I mentioned. But burnout is referenced and I can't quantify it. The numbers aren't fresh in my head. We did not score well in that category, meaning burnout is a factor. There's a direct correlation between that burnout, the vacancy rate and which is underlies your question. Vacancy rate remains high, a hard time recruiting, which means fewer people are doing more work and it's beginning to show. We're grateful to the employees who are answering that call and I made reference to a few. But there are many right now and it remains a factor. Burnout remains a factor.
And I think it would also be interesting if we could see how much time is costing the city? And it doesn't have to be split out or maybe it does, I don't know, but I don't think it has to be split out between departments. But I think that that would probably be a sobering number as well and would just kind of inform these discussions. And I'm, so there were 28 requests for staffing. Do you have a list of where all of these employees were requested?
Yes.
Oh, 38.
And by, sorry to interrupt the discussion, 38 out of the general fund. There were, it was more than that in other funds, but just focusing on general fund 38. Thank you.
Yeah, we do have a list. We can get that from budget team.
Thank you. And so these staffing increases out of the general fund, that's one time, right? These, these positions will have to be requested again following this. Is that correct or do I have it backwards?
He's going to come up and address that.
Great.
Hi.
Yeah, you're welcome. So only the on-call magistrates and the open space coordinator are funded one time. The rest of those positions. Great. And the open space coordinator, where it says grant.
It's actually funded with a grant, yes.
Okay, okay. And and the staffing and that continues, the slide after that is continuing the general fund? It starts with tourism and then there's water service.
Funded with other funds sources. So tourism is paying for the visitor center positions. Water services continuing on the rate study.
Okay.
Those additional businesses and so forth.
Okay.
The only one that has some general fund support is the the housing navigator is funded 75% with housing authority and 25% with the general fund.
Okay, and these are all ongoing unless it says otherwise?
Correct, yes.
And reclassifications. Okay. Yeah, I'd just be interested to see who requested positions that weren't funded and have a discussion about. And I know that it is a this is probably one of the most difficult things that you grapple with in terms of the budget. But I'm just interested in like, where are the big needs in the organization?
We can get that to you. I will generalize across the spectrum of the organization as you would expect. And I'll remind council too, I think it's a very important discussion you're raising, Mayor. A year ago, we funded a lot of new positions. I forget the number, but it was significant. Reasoning this year in part goes back to Rick's presentation, you know, that some flattening of revenues. I think it's an important discussion, but but to complete the discussion too, is to note our challenges with recruitment. Recruitment is for positions that are budgeted. We're having a hard time filling the seats. I do that and we certainly want to look at the new requests and honor those as well. The two kind of go hand in hand right now is we're having a hard time finding people for what was budgeted. Certainly, you know, that would be the case if if we were adding new positions to it.
Would we look at both of those so that we could reference what we're still trying to recruit for?
Are we showing vacancies? Did you have a graphic on that, on the vacancies? Is that something we're talking about today?
We had a slide on the number of vacancies, but I can pull information and those that have been open the longest or frequent, I can get that information.
See two questions over here. I'll let you fight it out.
Real quick, real quick. For employee development, this is something that doesn't come across council. We provide like management training, how to manage and develop existing employees, how to limiters if they're not performing well and help them get up to speed. And then career development, so people feel that they have a pathway to maybe another step. Are we, are we investing in that at all?
It's a very good question, and thank you for it. Again, when we roll this survey out, we'll touch on that because training is a question. I don't think we scored that well in that. So it's a work in progress. We do address training. I think we need to do a better job of it. We have a lot of training that is prerequisite to all positions. And I think we're doing a good job on that. We have our platform that we utilize, you know, gov, and these tools to help us with that ongoing training. I think your question is specific to career advancement and earning new traits. And, you know, we do some things. We have education reimbursement as one example. We are, we are really trying to encourage employees to pursue training that, not just what is required for their respective disciplines, but trainings to advance, leadership training. I think we need to do a better job.
Yeah, that and just the leadership training. Because a lot of times we can lose an employee because they weren't managing the process, identifying areas where they're struggling, or maybe not managing your performance well enough. And then they just fall off as opposed to really staying engaged with the employees, find out where, you know, some hotspots are, making sure we're doing the appropriate area action to keep performance up and expectations. And I think that doesn't look like it's an employee development, but it is. Because if they don't know that they're kind of sliding off this way before, you know, we can correct them, they end up leaving, or they're just doing a standard job, which doesn't help the organization. So I really encourage just to do that.
Thank you for that. Yeah, very good comment.
One slide showed that the only 34% employees were happy with their wage level. So I guess I would ask HR, is that a number we really can believe? Or is it the kind of number where, you know, if you did a survey at a company where the pay was excellent, would you still get 50% of the people saying, I'm unhappy? Am I phrasing that? If you can understand it.
Absolutely. Others can speak to this as well as this, and I know, I agree, 10% is not a great accomplishment since the last survey. But we'll take what we can get. And so we pour on this numeric ranking of what's 35%. No, am I getting that right? Right now, it's 34%?
23%.
So 34, I'm sorry, I missed it. 34% agree or strongly on that, at 45%, disagree. At any rate, we have a lot of work to do on this, what we're getting there. As we look at our market adjustments, that's a very important barometer for us because it shows how we're ranking with other, like us. And we have very good, you know, to look at. We're making ground where we are from a market standpoint, a competitive market standpoint. And because of that, as you would expect, I think there is a correlation to how employees feel about their compensation. Again, 10% increase over last time, which is good. So we're doing a couple of things. We're doing annual pay for performance for all of our general category employees. We have step plans for public safety and some water operators as well. That's year by year. And then 25% of our employees every year, this year, we're doing more than that, 42%. We look at the market and just to see how we're, how employees are based from a market standpoint. And then we're making adjustments to those accordingly. So there's a couple of things in play here, but does that help with what you were asking or?
Well, I guess I'm trying to figure out if I should really believe that number or take it with a grain of salt.
34%?
Yeah. And I do acknowledge the 10% increase. That's, that's a big deal. That's very significant. But if it's still only 34%, and if that's a really genuine number, that's scary. You know, I've said this before at meetings, but for those that hadn't heard it, I used to be a manager and I had a group of 11 people. You have more than that? Anyway, my basic philosophy was hire the best people, keep them happy. That's the, they do. I didn't have to do anything else. Obviously, I did other things, but that was the main part of it. So I guess to kind of take you back on what council member Matthew said, we need to continue to work on this. We'd like to see a situation where people thought that they were being treated well. That this is a great place to work. And we're moving in that direction. I guess I still have some concerns that maybe we're not moving by as fast as we should.
Good summary. Go ahead, Jessica.
I'm McCarthy. So when we asked the question in the survey, I believe it's worded something along the lines of, have we compensated fairly compared to others in the same line of work? Or something similar to that. And of course, taking a survey, who wants to answer, completely agree, I'm paid fairly? You know, when you're talking about compensation and we can always find someone who does what we do and gets paid more. The data behind it on my end and what my team does is pull market data. And we use benchmarks that are similar cost of living, lots of municipalities, regionally, you know, NAU and county. So there's a variety of benchmarks that we've selected as a team and they're refined over the course of time to change with the, with the market. I personally review a lot of those analysis. And the data behind it is many of the positions we review are truly behind the market, which is why we were asking and recommending the market adjustments. So the data behind it is, you know, let's look at the market and see, are we paying our jobs fairly? And I would say a few of the positions we review weekly are showing that we are behind market.
So very good answer, and I appreciate that detail.
Of course.
And I think that comment's kind of put this all into focus. So I, again, I'm agreeing with Lori. I think we do need to. I also understand there's limitations in how much money there is to go around. There's an awful lot of completely legitimate needs. So it's a balancing act. But we need to keep this in the back of our mind. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Seth, I saw you had your end. I completely agree with that. And I think as the conversation proceeds this week, if there's more we can do, we should absolutely explore that. You want to keep in mind the potential corner we could paint ourselves into down the road if revenues, if we find ourselves in a difficult position. So just, just giving a shout out to balancing that approach with future potential hardship.
If I may, on that, you come. There's so much data that we look at on, and it's a very good comment. At some point, you'll, our general fund with overall expenditures, and we track our labor costs each year. We're very competitive there. Before we addressed the public safety pension and a few other things years back, you know, we were pretty high with our labor costs. Now we're very competitive as a whole. And I think it's relevant to your question because when there is an economic downturn, or even currently, which is not a downturn, but we're expecting state revenues to flatten out, right? And the numbers are, you saw those earlier. How do we withstand the ebb and flow of the economies? We're in a good position. You know, we, we, we're having a hard time recruiting. Yeah, we covered that. And we're doing what we can to invest in our existing employees. But when the economy goes south, I think we're in pretty good shape. Never make predictions, but we have more tools in place now to deal with that. Yeah, thank you for the comment.
Wanted to ask, Mayor asked my questions on the list of who had requests. And is that possible to have for tomorrow to be able to circle back? So I would like to do that if we can. And I look forward to diving into the survey and taking a look at that. I think that's coming. So thank you for getting that ready. And I just want to really applaud everyone for getting us to where we are. It is an upward trend. And just as someone who's in a environment, when I first got on council and I saw what's going on, I was like, wow, we are in trouble. But we have come far, you've all worked very hard. And I just really commend you for thinking outside the box and really diving in deep and getting us on that.
Closing in on a break, but I think I want to go ahead. Stay up for a part that'd be great. Advisory Committee, that's good, Seth.
They made the schedule convenient for me, so. So hello again. I am standing here in front of you now as the co-chair for EAC, the Employee Advisory Committee. And this slide. We just have one slide. So I'm joined here today with my colleague, Seth Gregor, who will speak next. And for those of you that aren't aware, EAC, or Employee Advisory Committee, is a committee that meets twice monthly to discuss and make recommendations to city leadership concerning employment-related policies and procedures, compensation, benefits, safety, things of that nature. This group is reflective of every department here in the city to ensure that all voices are heard. Throughout the year, many ideas and proposals are brought forward for discussion and consideration. Many request, many of these requests do require funding, which is why the team will meet prior to the budget process in order to prioritize those requests for these discussions. During our last EAC retreat, you saw the EAC priorities, which were to continue market adjustments, compensation, keeping cost sharing on medical the same with no increase, the addition of two new holidays, and the increase to parental leave. Three of those top four priorities are included in your city manager's proposed budget. You'll see those items with a check mark on the screen to note which ones those were. We do want to acknowledge the budget team and the city manager's office for keeping the employee voices heard throughout this process. We appreciate the collaboration and the teamwork that continues throughout this process. We also want to extend sincere gratitude for the observance of Juneteenth and Indigenous Peoples' Day. The recognition of these holidays underscores our commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion in the community. We truly appreciate the opportunity to observe with reflection and reverence. And now I'll pass it on to Seth.
Morning, Mayor, Council, Seth Gregor. I'll be representing the EAC as well. I'm usually here with my cohort, Jared Witasik. So I'd like to give a shout out to him and appreciate his work on this. I was representing EAC along with Jared for the budget side. And being involved with it for the second year, it's still very overwhelming, so. But lots to learn and very good. So I appreciate the budget team letting me sit in and chime in when I can. So thank you. I'm just going to wrap it up of what Jess said as far as continued ongoing discussions in EAC. It seems like our future items have shrunk a little bit because of the co-chair's work on bringing those down. But as always, compensation is going to be coming your way in the future. It's just, it's this reality. We've touched on it a lot with the previous discussion you just had. But just some other things to be aware of. The parental leave did not get funded this year. It's a hot topic in there. And I know you've heard it before, but just be aware that it's going to be coming more as well. Just to include, include with those retention factors. There's going to be the temp benefit discussions as well. We're going to be, we're exploring those things to see how we can help those temps out and make it a better work environment for them. We're looking at some different awards to increase the values of those, the WOW Award more specifically. And, you know, along with compensation, we're looking at market retention pay, retention bonuses, one times, things like that. So that's all I have. Appreciate your time and enjoy it. Thanks. All right, Jen, Jessica, Seth, thank you very much. Any other questions real quick for them before we, before we move to break?
I'd just like to thank everyone who serves on the EAC because I know it's a lot of work in addition to what you do every day. So thank you.
Very good. Thank you, thank you. All right, we are about 17 minutes ahead. So let's take a quick 15-minute break. Let's be back at, let's, I'll tell you what, let's do, let's do a little bit shorter break. Let's come back at 10 after. Everybody, let's settle in at 10 after and we'll stay on pace, okay? Let's see if we can bring it back together in the next minute so we can keep it going.
Really a Lakers fan? Just kind of joking on that.
Lakers, Dodgers, Raiders.
Yes.
We just have to talk some.
You know? You too, right? You see, I knew that you had. All right. Welcome back. Time for new, where are we? New budget appropriations, right? All right, Brandy, you're on.
Hey, Mayor. Brandy Sudo, serving as your city's finance director. So the next section of the retreat is talking about new budget appropriations. I'm going to provide a summary of all the budget requests we received during the budget process as well as an overview of the general fund new budget investments. The button works. Oh. So as part of the fiscal year 2024, 25 budget process, divisions a significant amount of requests. We had a total of over $6.5 million new budget requests for needs across all funds for the budget team's consideration. Over 60% of those requests were general fund requests. Within the general fund, we received $20 million in requests, included personnel requests of $5.3 million, ongoing requests, as well as 800,000 in one-time personnel requests. The budget requests in the general fund included $22.9 million. 7.6 million of those requests were ongoing needs and 15.4 million were one-time. Looking at all the other funds, we had a total of 17.5 million in requests. Of those, 750 were personnel requests. Of those requests, 580 were ongoing requests and 167 were one-time. All other requests in other funds included 8.7.
All other requests in other funds included eight point seven million of that. Were, sorry, eight point, um, eight point seven of those were ongoing requests and eight million were one-time requests. So again, a significant amount of requests for limited resources throughout the organization. Moving on to focus on the general fund, new invest, new appropriation investments for the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five recommended budget include employee investments of three point one million dollars within the general fund. This includes one point nine million in merits for step pay plans or, and pay for performance increases for our regular pay plans, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in the new starting wage pay plan adjustments, hundred and fifty thousand in ongoing mid-year market adjustments, one hundred and fifty thousand dollars for position-specific market adjustments, as well as changes to our ad pace, and a hundred and ninety thousand dollars for the two additional. And lastly, eighty-five thousand in medical insurance for that one. Also, as part of the, the recommended budget includes significant additional funding for infrastructure within the general fund totaling five point eight million dollars. This is in addition to our base budget allocations, infrastructure. This includes two hundred and thirty-five thousand for fleet investments over the base fleet replacement funding, point one million in facility improvements and four hundred and seventy-five thousand in IT. So in summary, how is the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five recommended budget on the general fund balance between our available additional resources with the needs requested and recommended to be included in the recommended budget? So back at our February repeat, we shared that the general fund had very limited ongoing resources of seven hundred thousand dollars and ten point five million in one-time resources to be allocated for twenty-four, twenty-five. Since the February retreat, we have done some additional analysis to identify additional resources, three hundred million in ongoing and one point three million in one-time. So how did we do that? So we, you know, turned over the couch cushions, looked under the bed. No. So we did some, several historical analysis, um, looking at what we were spending versus what the base budget was in the general fund. And we found that we were able to reallocate on an annual basis, some anticipated savings to fund, um, some of those one-time ongoing requests that we receive year over year, um, that we've been using one-time resources to fund. And that equated to two point three million dollars, um, so approximately ninety-seven percent. On average, we can safely say that we, um, spend of the bu, base budget reallocation. So we looked at that three percent to reallocate that to ongoing resources, specifically focused on those one-time ongoing requests. In addition to that, we, um, did an analysis on how we budget for benefits for vacant positions versus the actual cost when those positions are actually filled. And we were able to realize an additional six hundred and sixty thousand dollars in ongoing. The one point three million dollars of one-time is related to anticipated expenditure savings in the twenty twenty-four budget. So, um, in addition, we did have updated revenue projections as Rick discussed earlier to, this morning, providing seven hundred and eighty, four hundred and eighty-five thousand of ongoing and four hundred thousand of one-time resources. And then in addition, um, we did have the funding already set aside on merits and the medical insurance, a total just over one point nine million dollars, almost two million dollars, for a total of available resources for the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five budget of approximately six point two million ongoing and twelve point three million in. Those resources were allocated to the following areas. Employee investment of three point four million ongoing, additional infrastructure investment of five point eight million in one-time. And of those twenty-nine million of new requests that we saw earlier in the slide, approximately two point eight million of those ongoing requests and four point eight million in one-time requests are recommended to move forward fiscal year budget with our limited resources. Of that, um, two point eight million of ongoing requests, two point three of those are those one-time ongoings, as well as approximately a half a million dollars is related to both new personnel as well as reclasses and networks within the general fund.
Well, we, um, get to see all of the infrastructure investments. That's so exciting.
It is. Yeah.
That we can catch up some stuff.
Yes. Yes. And we will, we will be getting into further details, I think, um, in, over the next couple of slides. So I'm providing a high-level summary and we're going to continue to dig deeper. In addition to our approved budget requests, the general fund is providing one-time resources of one point six million dollars to support other funds. It includes our housing fund, sustainability and the library. In the end, um, we have essentially spent all the, allocated all the available resources. Um, and currently we have fifteen thousand ongoing and twenty-three thousand in one-time available within the general fund. Just to note, however, there is no primary property tax levy increase included, except for new construction in any of these estimates.
And do we include, uh, do we have a contingency? So it's not down to, we only have fifteen thousand dollars or something?
Yeah, yes. We have a helping group.
Good question. Thank you, Jess.
Any other questions for me before I turn it over to Chris? I'm going to talk about how our requests, um, align with PBB and our priorities.
Thank you.
Here, can I just make a quick comment? If we keep the property the same, which is probably a good idea, that in effect is a lowering of the property tax when adjusted for inflation.
Good morning, uh, Mayor, Members of Council, Chris Rody, Bank Analyst. Your regular PB lens, uh, to all of this. I'm going to show you some of the same data points in different contexts, so you can see what it means and it kind of highlights some different insights, uh, into what this budget will look like as it's recommended now. I want to talk about what the quartiles are going to mean because we're going to start talking about specific requests and what they're going towards and how they score in our PBB system. So if you remember last summer, we went through and did a whole revamp of our priorities and objectives. The quartile indicates where it falls, uh, where, uh, in its score of, uh, how was evaluated against those, uh, priorities and objectives, a, as well as, um, BPAs, which were, are, are basic program attributes. Those are things that aren't the priorities or objectives themselves. It's things like, is this program mandated by a local, federal or state entity? Is it, uh, what, what, what does its cost recovery look like? So it's more of those general things that apply to any program outside of all priorities and objectives you may think of, but those were also taken into account to get the PBB score for each of these programs. I'd also want to just give a, a reminder that, that PBB score in the quartile is just one of our metrics that we used to determine which requests we thought were, were most worthy of funding. It is not, uh, anything that we're bound by or were bound by. We didn't look at two programs and say, well, this one scored an eighty-eight point one, this one scored an eighty-eight point two, so the eighty-eight point two gets the, the funding. That's not exactly how that works. It's just one of many tools that we've used in our deliberations. I also want to say that it's not a direct proxy for how important programs are in our community. As I mentioned, some of those BPAs are things that are not, are, um, are not tied strictly to the priorities and objectives. So just because a program ended up in quartile three or quartile four, it doesn't mean it's worthless and we should stop doing it. Oftentimes, there are important programs that find themselves in the lower end of that spectrum. There's a lot of things we do that are important and they, they fill out the breadth of it. It, it, it's again, just one, one system that we use to evaluate our programs and to allocate funds. And then look at the quartiles. If you see a quartile one, that means it was in the highest quarter of program. And a quartile four was the lowest quarter of program programs. It's not based on what their final score was, where everything above a seventy-five is quartile one, fifty to seventy-five is quartile two. We, we, we did it, um, kind of as a normal curve based on where, uh, the scores came in. So the, the median score is where we split between two and three. And then, um, you know, so a quarter of each are all the same size. Does it, does it make sense? So of the total requests we got, I'm going to kind of look over my shoulders here because I need to visualize the graph to explain what we're looking at here. This shows two lines for each of the four quartiles. The top line is your requests. The line immediately below it was our recommendations. Uh, so you can see what is, is most apparent, uh, in this graph. Uh, if you look at the top two or three lines have a lot more requests than the bottom. So this, so this really shows that our employees understood the assignment and really advocated for spending more monies, uh, in the top scoring programs where they were able to. It doesn't mean that everything was in the top two quartiles, but most of our requests were in quartile one or quartile two. That where it says most aligned, that's quartile one, more aligned is quartile two. So there, there's, there's kind of a, a language you can just transpose there. One, two, three and four are, uh, respectively go through. It, it really centered on quartile two programs. And quartile four programs received the fewest requests, which is really what we would expect, what we would hope to see far is as they're navigating this system. This is the, the way of presenting it here. You can see that forty-five percent of those requests were in quartile two. And if you add that to quartile one, almost seventy-five percent, seventy percent were requested to be, uh, uh, additional funds in quartile one or quartile two. Only eleven percent were in that, all those quartiles. So we're showing that we, our requests came in at the top of the scale, which is going to be moving forward. Recommendations, however, uh, were a little bit different. You may, uh, see here, we, we're still putting a lot of funds, we're recommending putting a lot of funds into those top quartiles. But only, uh, sixty-three percent of our recommended, uh, recommended funds go into the top two quartiles of our seventy percent. So we actually recommend funding some of those lower scoring, uh, programs. And you'll see why here in a second. Yeah. Here's the percent that we're recommending be approved, uh, in each of the four quartiles. This one may look surprising at first glance where it starts out closer to fifty percent in quartile one and quartile two. And you get down to quartile three and quartile four, four programs. We're actually recommending that we approve ninety percent almost of those quartile four programs. And again, that's because they're important and we have to do them. So what this really shows is that when we got requests in those lower scoring programs, quartile three and quartile four, they were really necessary uses of funds. It, it wasn't, uh, uh, our employees saying, oh, well, I know this program scores really poorly. We want more funds for it anyways. It actually shows that those are areas that our, our employees really scrutinized said, no, we really, really, really need these funds to continue this necessary program. And when we saw that in the budget team, we generally agreed with that. So the requests for those lower scoring programs are ones we actually are recommending that we fund at a higher rate. And we'll get into what some of those look like, but they often are ones that are mandated, or otherwise just incredibly necessary for our operations, um, you know, really, yeah, keystone pieces that we have to do. Um, and, uh, that made it easier for us to want to fund those things. And obviously it made it easier for those staff members to bring those requests forward to us. This is my last slide here. Is it, yes, it is. Shannon, are you next? All right. Any questions about how the quartiles are going to work? Is there explained? We'll get into more detail about what it looks like, but wanted to give you that overview so you have the context as we have the discussions.
Shannon Anderson, one of your different managers. Um, as Chris, uh, shared, fifty-six percent of the total requests were included in the recommended budget for quartile one. That's what we're going to talk about here next. The budget team received approximately eleven point eight million dollars in requests for quartile one. And the recommended budget includes approximately six point six million of those requests. So quartile one includes those requests that are most aligned with the key community priorities and council objectives. The highlights on this slide, as well as the next one, are an illustrative list, so not all-inclusive, of what's included in quartile one by priority-based budget program. Each program in that second column has a color of money indicator. All of the requests on this slide indicate these programs are part of the general fund. That's the gold color. You will also see the ongoing and the one-time investments by priority-based budget program. To expand a bit more about a few of these programs plus in the recommended budget, um, we'll start with making improvements. For example, in the dispatch center has two hundred and six thousand dollars in ongoing and four hundred and eighty-nine thousand in one-time. This supports the safe and healthy community key, community priority. And those improvements include an telecom guide card, which is integrating emergency medical dispatch protocols within the CAD system. It also includes spider technology, which is a fully automated. It goes back to the victims, victims to notify them of what's happening with their particular call. And then also the purchase of dispatch console radios. The city will continue their investment in infrastructure with a hundred and twenty thousand in ongoing and five hundred and sixty-six thousand in one-time. We're also going to partner with external inspection service providers in order to make sure inspections timely for the ongoing development that's happening within our community. And that's the three hundred and forty thousand that you see in one-time. So you'll see some new color of money indicators on this slide. The aqua color, uh, represents enterprise funds such as water services. And the dark green is special revenue funds such as HERP. The requests in the recommended budget demonstrate one-time investments in the streets and water services infrastructure. Streets administration for three hundred thousand dollar one-time is to design buildings four and seven here at Core Services. And this allows us to protect the investment that the city is making in both vehicles, as well as equipment used in our streets operations. For the Wells Water Production, Operation and Maintenance of the six hundred and fifty one-time and the Wildcat Plant Operations and Maintenance for the three hundred and seventy-three, six hundred and seventy-one time, majority of these one-time expenses are to cover increases in the costs of chemicals and electricity. Certainly happy to answer any questions that you might have, or I may call a friend if it's really specific. Otherwise, I'll pass it on to Joanne to continue at quartile two.
Shannon, I have a question. Um, so on the, like the street maintenance at Streets Administration, can you explain a little bit more about what that is? It's like that's an ongoing cluster.
Well, the majority of what you see here is one-time. Um, ongoing is going to be more their ongoing operations.
Yes, that was my point. We'll, we'll.
Um, I know that the three hundred thousand is the design of buildings four and seven. Scott, do you know what's in maintenance for the two thirty-one?
You mentioned electricity, the water production and Wildcat Plant.
Yes.
Is that, you know, an increase?
We're seeing an increase in those expenses and so they're. And so they're planning forty. If not all of those one time dollars are for those types of expenses, electricity as well as chemical.
So is that usage or rate increase?
It's probably a little of both, Shannon. You want to
down here? The price is right.
Oh, go ahead. You know, the two thirty one I'm imagining.
The two thirty one, I'll have to go look up. So for the street maintenance, it's just increased materials and maintenance. So just general street maintenance, cost of supplies, et cetera. And I can grab my laptop and come back for more.
Okay, thank you.
So they could be similar for water. So again, a lot of it is the parts, the maintenance, the rebuilding of pumps, oils. I think specifically what also reflect here is the reason that it is one time is because we are in this process for the for the rate. The budget we presented is in line with the rate model. Make sure those stories stay the same as we progress through. But until we can get the final approval, it was able to be funded as one time. But many of those, to your point, those ongoing maintenance wouldn't go in funding.
And the electricity cost of that increase or usage increase?
Of rating.
Yeah, friend works.
Any other questions? Great, Joanne, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Shannon. I already phoned a friend. Well, thank you. Today I am going to talk about quartile two, which is programs that are more aligned. As you can see with this slide, twenty, over twenty million requests requested in quartile two. And in the budget that is being recommended, eleven point three is being recommended. And that's fifty four percent of those requests were approved. I'll go into some detail of some of these items. And if there are any specific questions, I know this, actually, I think right after this, we're going to go into some more details specifically on housing and sustainability. So some of those questions can be answered. But as you can see, there's a difference in the color of money. Some of these are general funds, some of these special revenue funds. Pulling out some items, the affordable housing unit creation. As I mentioned, I know Sarah will be going into more detail. Quite a bit of conversation about some of the things that we could recommend to to create some unit creation. And some of those things included include two hundred thousand for the rental assistance demonstration program to hire a consultant to get those RFPs out and and help our housing staff make some progress. I think there was quite a bit of conversation this morning about staffing challenges and burnout. And we really, really tried to look for ways to address some of those items in the budget. This is one to get a consultant who specializes specifically. We also added some funding for land acquisition, half a million, and then half a million for the city council incentive policy for affordable housing as well. Just going down, as I mentioned, we have the community climate action resilience and mobilization. And I know Jenny will be presenting and going into more detail on some of those requests. Within criminal investigations, we have funding in there for a real time alert system for law enforcement. And then cybersecurity management, obviously, is a big item for our internal concerns. Doesn't respond to random emails at once.
CJ's phone him.
But as you can see, some of these are, actually, in the next slide, internal items as well as external items. Obviously, we have our our IT, our desktop support, very important. Our employee development and training. Again, I know something that we discussed this morning. We did approve forty one, over forty one thousand for tuition reimbursement for our employees. Had a bit of discussion about that, as well as forty five thousand for citywide training and development. And then, last but not least, under police training, we approved funding for a design for the public safety building expansion. If you recall, when we had the CIP retreat, the chief presented to provide addition to that building and potentially some options for housing. So what we decided was to put some funding towards getting a design for that building and potentially looking at some opportunities for grants for that project. With that, I'm happy to answer any specific questions. I know we're going to go into a little bit more detail. Heidi, I don't know if we want to move into quartile three. Is there a question? Yes.
On the CDBG management, I think was on the slide before. Isn't that come out of the CDBG? Hundred and seventy seven thousand?
Question. Barrett can answer that.
Seventy seven thousand dollars. Sorry, Mayor Council, sorry, our housing director. Because these are within within the priority based budget programs, I was losing my words. The priority based budget program, CDBG, grant management has a couple other things in there. And that in particular is CHAP, the Community Home Buyer Existence Program. So the hundred and seventy seven thousand dollars is program income that's come in, this being reallocated within the CHAP program. We manage that contract much like we manage CDBG contracts. And that's why I felt like it's a separate expense. Not a separate expense, it is pure program money for CHAP. And then, Joanne, will we be getting into the details of the city facilities capital? Six million? Or detail on that? Too much detail, but I can tell you the two. Like three million, so. I can tell you the two projects that make that up. So there is the new windows at the downtown library. So that's two million dollar project. And then a million and a half dollars towards some increments in City Hall related to one of the areas that needs some re-rupturing to fit people, as well as the downstairs bathrooms are not ADA compliant. So working to do that project. So those, that's one point or one point. As a side note, Scott, thank you for the women's bathroom. Thumbs up. We all came out dry. So much. Oh, my gosh. Curators, it's a highlight of our day. It's the little things in life. That's my new mantra.
It's snowing outside.
So let's, let's give this this last group, Brandy, Chris, Shannon, Joanne again. Well, guess what? According to the agenda, it's lunchtime. So we're just blowing right through that. And we're just, we're just going to keep it moving.
December, cutting in. It comes from the title director. So I get to speak about quartile three, which is our less aligned. We had eight point seven million requested and we are recommending in this budget, five point eight million of it. Have a delay. Some of the items that you see on here are super important. So I too am less aligned, but we are still going to be taking care of them. Bulky trash. What we're doing here mainly is we're taking care of our maintenance of our radio systems. And we also have utility increases at the landfill. And so we're going to be putting the bulk of that money into those two items. For arts and sciences, we have our relationship with Creative Flagstaff. We had a lot of conversation with the relationship with Creative Flagstaff. They are our provider. And we are going to actually be investing more money into that partnership as well as art X. We had some conversation about that the other day. And of course, with administrative support to get those capital projects out the door. For the Convention and Visitors Bureau, we are going to be doing a new visitor study. We haven't had one since two thousand and seventeen. And we have a lot of stakeholders that are curious how that looks since COVID is now hopefully more or less over. We're also putting more money into the Route Six Centennial. We had a conversation about that on Tuesday night. We have our Visit, Discover, Grow campaign, where we know that it's a bridge from tourism into economic development. Where, you know, a visit can last a lifetime. We continue to promote that campaign. We do it in a lot of things like business journals, outward facing type of marketing. And we are also going to be lending more support to the airport marketing arm because of the fact that we are trying to get second service. For the direct rental assistance, that's an increase in rental assistance. And that, of course, comes out of the HUD funding. For the incident, incident and patient care report management, that's all new money. And that is going to go to the contract services that we have with them. Actually, it's not new money, but where there is new money is with the recycling transfer facility operations. That will be new money that we're putting into that program. Any questions that Heidi Derry Berry could answer for you?
I have a question. I don't know where this belongs, but I know it's for you. So you're already up. Earlier, I saw a mention of a airport visitor center.
Yes.
Is that going to be self funded through retail? Is that, does that come out of the enterprise?
All come out of the Tourism BBB fund. So it's a partnership with the airport. The airport will manage that facility, that part of the Air Cafe facility for the grab and go service that we're going to be offering. I don't know if we've had a larger conversation, but we had two failed RFPs trying to get somebody to take over the cafe. There's just a lot. We don't have enough traffic throughout the hall. We have them at spurts where it wasn't, some of the restaurant owners and bar owners were telling us they just can't make the numbers work. So instead, Brian Galsden and Norma's really great job of looking at what other airports are doing. And this upscale, upscale grab and go service seems to be the ticket. So we're going to be doing that in one part of the cafe and then the other part and express. I think I'm allowed to say that Trace Ward hates certain names. The Express Visitor Center, where we have people that are always asking for those items that they travel with. And then they are also asking for information when they got there, like, oh, I have an extra day. Can I have some information about where I can go? So that part of the cafe area will be solely funded through the BBB and with the tourism. I'm sorry, Greg, I didn't mean to.
No, can I just add on to what you just said? Because I, and thank you for raising it, Mayor. The question is very important. The two failed RFPs, you know, we can give some context to that. Cafe out there has been vacant for two years.
Almost two years now.
Two years. And when it, when we decided to resolicit the service, it was because the previous cafe that was there was was not really doing well. And the hours were sporadic and a host of other reasons. But we needed to go back out and try to find another provider unsuccessfully. And after a couple of years, you know, that's just lost revenue to the and I was the last one to hop on board with this. I'm Heidi and Brian and others get all the credit. I was a skeptic. But the decision was made and we consulted with local restaurants. We had a group up in my office talking with two or three or four restaurants in town. And we were hearing very clearly, this isn't going to work. Don't even bother. No one's going to submit a proposal with current numbers. It can always attribute it to a number of things, the lower employment because we lost a carrier, United. And just ever since COVID, kind of a reduced activity in the terminal. Now things are picking back up, but we're not at a point where a cafe can really go at it. So the decision was just do something different. The bending approach, and we've seen some successes in the holding area. Now we're going to mimic that in the, what used to be the cafe is more than just like machines with candy bars. It's not that. It's product, fresh product that gets regenerated frequently and restocked. And so it's a good food product and then good coffee products as well. And the other thing I will add to the discussion, pardon me if I misstate this, but you know, we were hesitant to see our, you know, we, the previous provider out there had taps and full beer. And there's a bar, as there is in many airport terminals. We're losing that, but we're pursuing internally a liquor license to, so we can sell bottled beer, you know, to be consumed on premises at that location, all in an effort to enhance the traveling experience for for those going through the terminal. And that's in part the reason why we're looking to have some staff out there. So the idea was to combine any or an express visitor center with this grab and go facility. There will be staffing on site to keep an eye on things and to kind of watch it. And we hope it's successful. I'm feeling much better about it personally. I think it's a good model considering the circumstances and one that has been replicated in other terminals. You know, you see these facilities like in Sky Harbor. You can, you don't always have to have just a sit down meal. You can go and get something on the go like this. So it will help us get the revenue stream back in place and we all hope it's successful.
One thing I immediately popped into my mind's eye and was an assumption, maybe it's part of it, I hope it can be. The visitor center downtown has lots of things, trinkets for sale, sets, Monopoly games, you know, et cetera. Same things would be available at the satellite.
There will be, there will be items like that there. And then there's not as large as the, the train station visitor center, of course. But then there's going to be items, for instance, you forgot your head pillow and you know, you have a long travel day. You want earbuds, things like that, that you would normally see typically at an airport store. Also, with the grab and go that Greg's talking about, it's definitely going to be upscale. I need you to know you're going to have fresh, you'll get fresh food. And there will be a coffee counter where you can actually make your own latte, things like that. And then we're going to be duplicating some of that into the hold room as well. Because we have some people that don't care. They want to get right through TSA and then they're there doing their thing. So we're going to make it so that you can have it when you get off the plane or if you're still saying goodbye to a loved one and then as well when you're sitting into the hold area. Brian has been doing enormous research on this and him and Adam Mealy are going to make this happen. I have every confidence. It is our plan B, but we feel like it's a solid plan B. And then turn it over to Scott.
Scott, you get quartile four.
Quartile four, the most important quartile of the day.
Yes, it is.
So again, as Chris Rhodey said and Heidi said, and you heard from the other Heidi, quartile four does not mean we cannot do things. And remember, all of these examples are a sample of things that are probably the biggest or the most obvious things that you might have some interest in. And Heidi has that full spreadsheet. But quartile four, you will always find things that maybe aren't required of a city, but they just make good sense. And they fall into a category that is quartile four. Not a bad place to be necessarily, but we still have to pay close attention to it, look into it. What I do observe as I look through the data, you will find a lot more probably one time items in quartile four because they are typically things that just need to kind of get addressed. But more of the ongoing resource I've noticed goes in those more higher priorited quartiles. So this one, the requested five million, four point five got funded. There's a couple really big projects in here that'll eat up a lot of this. Nope, I didn't. Did do it. Apologies. Couple of big ones I want to point out. I think most notably is the one point five million in the right hand column of one time for fitness and aquatic center operations. That was actually the Aquaplex Siding. So thinking of your maintenance and facilities to capital renewal, this is one that we have been talking about for years. And the Aquaplex Siding has been failing for a number of them. This will get that project delivered a hundred percent this year. So that is the really large one time. So that is the really large one time item in quartile four, five million. The gift shop retail sales, that is back to the BBB revenues and primarily to the airport improvements that Heidi was just speaking about. That's that one time of six hundred thousand. And then service partner contracts, again, pretty large money, but it is in the ongoing column. You're actually going to get into that slide next. So you'll have a real good breakdown of where that goes. But quartile four is still really important. I think that's the takeaway. Uh, Aquaplex siding is a great example. We still need to do it. Always going to be higher priorities than a re-site, but we eventually have to start tackling these projects. So super excited for the whole organization to get that one knocked out. And I keep coming back to it, so I think it's really the highlight of quartile four for me.
Um, and I think this is really a good example of just how important these programs are, even though they might not align with community priorities uh as such, but election management, I mean, we all know that's critical, right? That's a, a service we cannot do without. Um, and you also see it's significant, you know, three hundred thousand one time. That's this year's election, yes. Uh, so this is not a discretionary expenditure, uh but it is a quartile for um expenditure. And we like to remind Stacy Salzberg that her election management does not score high in terms of these uh you know, just really good examples as, as you go through all of these are pretty important. Um, and thank you, Scott, for welcoming through that.
Next.
My shirt, Rick. My gosh.
Hello, Mayor Council. Uh, the next part, we're going to talk about service partner contracts. First, we're going to talk about what the budget team reviewed and proposed for this upcoming uh year uh for our service partner contracts. Here's a list of our service partner contracts that we have currently in place. Uh, these have been ongoing services that we've wanted to provide within our community. Uh, just remember, these are not donations, contributions. These are really partners that we want to deliver things within our community on behalf of the city. Maybe we don't want to get in the business of it, but we want others to deliver these types of things on behalf of the city. So we go through a contractual commitment with these organizations to help deliver these on behalf of our citizens too. Um, as noted, Scott noted, the good news is every year we would ask for one time monies for this to fund these. We really do understand this commitment for these contractual natures, and they are ongoing resources that we have budgeted uh this coming year. There is slight increases to all of these programs. Uh, budget team thought it was with inflation and, and costs going up. We felt that they do need additional assistance uh this coming year. Uh, as we did in the current fiscal year, we did about a five percent increase uh to these. And the next slide will kind of talk about where the increases are um for these contracts next year. High Country Humane uh has a specific contract and specific increases related to consumer price index changes. Uh, this was something that the city worked with the county uh to define how we're going to manage growth and increases in their contracts over the years. So there's two different CPI ratios that we look at, one for their ongoing resource. That care and veterinarian and all that, as well as the building CPI, the maintain, maintaining the building. And they come back with different CPIs uh each year, but they are capped also as far as how much we would give as far as increase. So I worked with the county and we, we tied down exactly what their increase will be for next year. So it's nice to have this in advance uh before it comes to the next fiscal year. So uh for High Country Humane, it's a three percent on their base contract. This is the biggest piece, the nine hundred thousand plus a piece of it for the organization. And then three point five for the facility repair, uh and that type of work. All others are looking, we're providing a five percent, we're recommending a five percent increase to these organizations in the coming year uh to help them with their operations. And just one item to note is uh the one agency that did reach out and request a higher funding with Boys and Girls Club. Uh, they did request to have a forty thousand budget next year. And we're close. Uh, we're at thirty eight, seven, close. We didn't approve it at that level. We thought we'd be fair and equal with other service partner agencies, and we're proposing that uh increase. Um, they did mention they may be here to talk, but we thought they would be in the afternoon. So we may hear from them later uh on this request, or maybe they're good with the seventy eight, thirty eight, seven, fifteen hundred dollar difference. That's the existing contracts and we're at, we didn't get any new requests this year for service partner contracts, uh which is good. Agencies are, are managing. And uh, the next part we want to go over with you, Council, is about how we're going to go forward when we get these types of requests uh from the agencies in our community. Before that, I would like Greg to say something.
No, I'm going to uh ask you a question. You know, I say a lot of things. Um, but it's an opportunity to uh remind Council, I guess, can you talk about shelter services and how it is that, that we now have a contract in place? And this goes back to a discussion at this table from a year ago.
Yeah, a year ago, this came forward as a, a request uh through the city manager's office, I believe, directly, right?
Yeah.
And so the budget team looked at this and, and brought it forward last year for the services that they want to provide in our community and their support they need from us. Uh, we are working on the contract still. Uh, there's been delays on, on both sides. Uh, we hope to get this um completed and wrapped up because it is a hundred thousand. It will likely come to Council for approval because of the contract value. Um, so this is one that purchasing is working directly with um Flagstaff Shelter Services. That's the company that uh requested the funding. And we're looking to get that tied down into at the level.
Yeah, unless there's any questions.
Um, given recent conversations about warming centers, cases and stuff. Um, and this may not be the appropriate forum, but it just seems more logical that we need to have a conversation with the shelter services to um, you know, open up during the day, see that um my answer are looking to not have to be dispersed out, you know, have to walk distances and stuff. Maybe providing that additional service or have you had those conversations to maybe provide it since already providing so much for those, and, and a lot of those people, you know, I drove through there the other day because of recent complaints. And everybody's out on the street and then they're walking into town. And that's just sometime, some of them have monkey issues and stuff. And it just seems logical, more logical that we would provide that day.
We have another friend in the room.
Good question. Yes, good morning, Councilmember, Mayor and Council. Um, the police department, we met again with the shelter yesterday. So the main reason that people are asked to step out of the shelter during the day is to clean. Um, they've had outbreaks with bed bugs in the past. And so I need to get everyone out to turn over the linens before you can let them back in. And talking to them, it's just seems they are limited by space right now. If they had a whole separate building, they could, you know, move people in, play pool, play games, do what you need to do. But it seems like they just don't have that. And they do have their other facilities coming online, but neither of those are the lantern and the crown. Neither of those are set up for a day center type operation. At least that's the impression I got from our meeting yesterday.
And Chief, they're, once they've cleaned, they allow people back into the building.
They do. Um, we're working through some of that because they've had some issues with people bringing drugs into the facilities and weapons. So that was one of the purposes of our meeting was to try and forget hardened, for lack of a better purpose, the, the check-in process. Um, we had some good ideas. We just not, nothing concrete that I can discuss right now.
Still tell me during one of the uh really cold periods that they were allowing people to stay in without having to leave by like moving everyone to one side of the building while they cleaned that side and then moving back over.
Yes, rotating people into different portions. Um, but logistically, that seems to still be somewhat of a challenge.
Yeah, as we're chatting, Patrick says the contract for FSS is coming your way next week. So we'll get that, but uh that answer your question, Councilmember.
Oh, Mayor Council, thank you, Rick. Uh, my name's Tia Hatton. I work in sustainability and I'm here to present on the funding application and internal process for these service partner contract requests. I did send out an email with the application itself yesterday morning, if you'd like to take a look at that. Um, this presentation will cover the following. Um, Rick is going to talk about past challenges and receiving and processing these requests um as well as prior fiscal year examples of requests. Then building off what Rick shares, I'll talk about the intent and goals behind the creation of this new funding application for these requests. And I will give you all an overview of the contents of the application and guidelines. And finally, we will touch on the internal process and how processing these requests will now align with our other city processes a little bit better. And at the end, there will be an opportunity for questions that Rick and I can help answer. Before I move on, I wanted to note that this has been an inter-division process with guidance and she's from Management Services, Procurement, Legal, and even the Housing Team helping with the application insights. And with that, I will hand it back to Rick for
So a couple of years ago is why drove us to think about the process with our service partner requests. Um, the budget team, also city manager, we're just getting maybe an email. Like, hey, I want to do this Upstart Program. Here's my thoughts. Some may have been just by word of mouth coming forward. And we thought, well, how do we, how do we gather all that information to make sound decisions? A couple of years ago, we brought a list of requests forward to Council. And we had very limited documentation and, and responses to your questions as councils. Like, you know, are they financially secure? Is this going to be an ongoing resource? Um, you know, explain the needs a little bit better. And, and us as, as budget team, sometimes we don't have all the details. We don't get the level that you may want to have. So we fought, saw this challenge during the budget retreat back in uh fiscal year twenty fiscal year twenty-three budget. And, and it was interesting conversation how we got to get to approving these agreements. We got there uh as Council. You gave us direction. We have funded uh some of these things. But that's the big picture of why we're coming forward with this more structured approach. Uh, you know, so questions come up about warming centers or these kind of things for funding. Now we've got something, a place to say, here, please tell us about your program, what your request is and the details that uh sustainability, purchasing, uh legal, housing, all worked out. I think really tie in to give you the big picture. Uh, and will help us present these to you in the future.
So yeah, following up on what Rick just spoke about.
Takes a second.
We needed to create something to help us with these challenges. So the purpose and reasons for creating the application and solidifying the internal process are to create an application um and process that is consistent in all and external partners and ensuring these requests are in line that are already in place, such as our budget process. Further, the application will ensure there's more context to funding requests. We'll give decision makers important information they need to evaluate the vendor and the funding request. Also, creating this application brings greater transparency by bringing it into our budget process and creating consistent lines of communication between all involved and bringing forward these requests in a clear manner laid out for both service partners and staff. And lastly, the application and process increases accountability by laying out the same expectations ahead of time for all requests and formalizing reporting from these service partners after the expenditure of funds. And while we're talking about the purpose of this application, we also want not, and that it's not necessarily an open call for funding requests. As um, we don't really have an ongoing pool of funds for most of these. So here's an overview of the funding application and guidelines document. Um, we provided just the table of contents here to show you the uh sections that we included such as eligibility and requirements, affecting on the city's mission, vision, organization values and budget priorities. And for example, an if awarded section. Um, for context, this application framework was developed with examples from some of the other city uh like grant and funding applications such as the Neighborhood Sustainability Grant. And with reviews and input, as I said, from Legal, Sustainability, Housing and Management Services and Procurement. Also wanted to give a quick shout out to my predecessor, Marissa Malloy, who is now in Housing, who helped with the initial draft of this. So continuing to discuss, discuss the application itself, here's a sample of some of the questions. These application questions aim to provide helpful context to incoming requests in turn, which helps the budget team and Council review these requests. It also serves as a tool to share our city goals with requesters and reminds them to check for funding with entities that we help fund such as Unit A or Creative Flagstaff. Some of the application questions include clearly and concisely describing the project or service and its goals. Driving how the project aligns with our organization's vision, mission, values, and priority-based budgeting. There are multiple questions regarding if they've previously received City of Flagstaff funding as well as what additional funding there may be pursuant to these requests. And there's a question that if applicable, the listing partner is affiliated with the funding request. And the last question here, ask them to describe how or whether the project or service will have um impact beyond the life of the funding. Right, so now Rick and I are going to give a brief overview of the internal process for these requests.
It's too small to read, so.
Okay, um, so y'all will kick us off. So beginning in this first upper left-hand block, we ideally want requests to be coming in July first through December thirtieth. This is our preferred timeline um to help ensure that these requests align well with our existing city processes. Um, however, we definitely understand that emergencies and critical requests come in. Um, so we would ideally like to use this process on those requests outside of that timeframe as well. Um, and then still in this first box, quester is then provided the application, which can be sent by staff or council, depending on who receives the request. And then moving on to the next step, um, staff will be on hand to assist with any questions with the application to support this quester. Um, and then as the requests come in, staff will organize these. Um, and then moving on to that third box on the top row, um, staff will present all the funding requests to the budget team during division review. And at that time, the budget team will review these requests, available funding, and make recommendations. After Rick.
Uh, then as it comes forward uh through the budget process, um, we'll bring it for our April retreat. It's when we'll have the conversation, what has come forth and share information with city council as far as um, funding requests, as far as budget team's recommendation, resources availability, and have that conversation with council to get direction uh for approved budget. Uh, if approved, uh, for the funding, staff will work with procurement. Based on dollar amount, we've got certain procurement thresholds. If there are multiple agencies that provide the same service, we can't just necessarily direct select. We may have to go out and bid the service and, and ask them uh to compete. It may be a competitive process. Uh, just want to know, it's not always just we're giving it, that, that those dollars to those people. We have to follow procurement laws and rules. Um, we'll work with legal, get contracts in place. And then, you know, upon award in the new fiscal year, it'll be available July first after a budget is approved. And again, if it's over the dollar threshold, hundred thousand, council is required to approve those types of contracts. And we'll bring those back to uh you, um, those high-level contracts. We'll issue those back to you, those high-level contracts. We'll issue perimeters, and then we'll begin the invoicing process. It has to be a little more proactive than what we've done in the past, where we get these requests. We now have a structure in place to move these forward, once we get the green light and your recommendations. So, definitely a proof process will flow in this instance.
Yeah, that's everything.
I have a question. And I can see this timeline working for, you know, the agencies that we've had tracks with, and this is just the renewal. But potential, you know, and I know solicitation or encouragement for other applicants, but this seems to be a really long, drawn-out process. And if it's, you know, just a renewal every year, it's not a big deal. But maybe a new agency that really has a legitimate request, it seems, you know, a year to wait seems to be really long, to make that point. And then, I was curious why, in our application process, we are, they score higher or lower if they're not meeting our priority-based budgeting. I mean, that seems like, that's a thing for us, but, you know, there's a lot of needs out there that don't fit into necessarily our priority-based budgeting fellows. So, I was just curious why we put that in there. All right, Rick?
Tia's been a great help, and she's very knowledgeable. But that's just one component of information we want to know. How does it really advance our priority-based budgeting? We haven't really gone to the level to think about how to score these. I think that's a great comment that maybe we work on before we bring these to budget team. Is there some type of metrics we can do for ranking or scoring these things? You know, an ongoing resource versus a one-time? It's different how we can address those. Thanks for bringing that up. I think that's a great, great thought. But it's not all.
Good information. No, but if Scott showed, you know, fourth pile, you know, it was somewhere necessary, but it's not ranked. I don't want to fill that over and target me on things that here may not fit into our budgeting structure.
I think one of the struggles with service partner contracts is a lump of contracts that go in the PBB system and rank. If you pull them out individually, they may rank differently, people commuting, that kind of stuff. So, they work on for that pool, right?
Counsel, long enough to remember when people were catching the alarm in the hallway and emailing you, and could you come out to my facility and see it? It was a very informal, disorganized way of approaching it. And I remember the meetings that we had at council were difficult. So, I think this will help that process.
All right. So, we still have Ginny and Sarah. We're trying to get you in before lunch. We're moving really well. So, might actually get out early.
In the way of lunch.
Jane Neiman, Climate Action Section Director. I'm going to do a really quick review of our analysis on how our budget advances the Carbon Neutrality Plan. Once again, staff were asked to consider their funding requests through the Carbon Neutrality Plan lens. I believe this is the fifth year that we've done this. We started doing it with the earlier climate plan. First, I'd like to shout out all the team members, many of whom are in this room, that take part in this process. We know that it is one more question that you get to answer, but it does provide us with a lot of valuable information. So, thank you, Team Flagstaff. We conduct this process so that we can understand how the new projects that we're talking about will contribute to our Carbon Neutrality Plan goals. The CMP is not just the work of the Sustainability Office, right? It's the work of this entire organization. And, you know, we won't get far if we rely on sustainability staff alone. And so, what this process allows us to do is to understand of all the budget requests, right, which are really moving forward the CMP, which are aligning with the CMP, et cetera. And this data, it's really a data collection process. It provides a number of benefits. It really helps us keep us accountable, helps us understand how we are implementing the Carbon Neutrality Plan. It helps us to learn about the work of the other divisions, and it helps to build capacity among staff, helping them connect their work to our climate goals. Once we get that data that's provided by staff in the budget process, we then analyze it to understand if, what requests align or advance the carbon neutrality. And so, we are thrilled that the budget is advancing climate action with about $4.7 million in funding. 2.8 of that million really advanced the CMP, and 1.8 million aligned with the CMP. Projects that advance the CMP are those that really move us forward on our goals, and probably happened because of the CMP. Examples include all the projects you see below in the highlights. Projects that are aligned are those that might happen anyways, right, but they are resulting in efficiencies. So, maybe those are energy efficiencies or transportation efficiencies. You've seen most of these projects on earlier slides, and we're just really thrilled that all of these projects make a dent in our work to achieve our climate goals. This is just another way. Thank you. This is just another way of slicing this data. So, again, you saw most of these projects on other things. This is just one other lens to use, looking at it. Main library replacement, right? It's also a really good example of the co-benefits of climate action, right? Yes, that will be good for operational and energy efficiency. It's also good for the comfort of our employees, right, having working windows. Facilities Catastrophic Fund, it's a really good example of how we become a more resilient organization, right? How we're prepared for disruption and change that we know climate change is bringing faster and faster. And then, you know, the last one, the Carbon Neutrality Plan, as y'all know, goes far beyond emission reductions, right? It's about making our community more resilient and more equitable. Our Indigenous Outreach is a great example of that.
Hearing from Scott or somebody about $100,000 for Catastrophic Fund, what that is and why we need it.
We can now.
Can we now? The big number.
It is a big number. So, we historically have not been able to put funds aside for catastrophic repairs. So, we know it's a matter of time. We lose a major roof system or a major building envelope, or maybe a boiler, or an electrical system of some sort. So, we generally try to replace and repair things as we go. But I think with aging infrastructure and knowing that we could have a catastrophic failure at any point of something, it's good practice to have some money set aside. So, we found $500,000 of one time, correct? Yeah, one-time money. And it's just sitting there. So, in the event you have a facilities concern that is catastrophic, you have some funding to go do that. So.
Is that out of the general fund?
It is general fund dollars, yes.
That this will be a rollover fund.
I would assume we would request it to be carried forward unless, you know, it's utilized. And then, the city would have to try to recoup that. We've also tried this on the fleet side of the House in years past, and we'd like to continue growing funds in both facilities and fleet. We have a catastrophic fire engine failure. Items, no different with facilities. And, you know, I think that does appear to be a number that is fairly large. I will tell you, it is not. We have a million square feet and over 100 buildings. 500, or 500,000 goes away real fast, beyond a catastrophic failure of one system. I like having that fund.
Sure. Would I?
Good still morning, Mayor and Council. I was planning on presenting after lunch, when folks were kind of, you know, digesting and thinking. So, now I get a room of anxious, hangry people. So, that's always exciting. And here we go. I messed that up.
I was invited to share with you the investments that our organization is making and furthering our 10-year housing plan and council's other housing goals. So, the cover of the plan you may be familiar with, CREATE 1 was one of the biggest goals, which is incentivize the creation of affordable units through programs and mechanisms. And it's exciting to be able to tell you that the budget team identified half a million dollars to go towards the existing incentive policy for affordable housing. That's the biggest allocation, one-time allocation directly to the fund that we've ever received. So, thank you for the focus on that. Staff also requested to set aside some money for a local government contribution fund for things like LIHTC, low-income housing tax credit. When folks ask for a matching contribution at this moment in the time when it's required or asked for by the tax credit application, we go knocking on budget team's door. And so, this year, we said, hey, we've found some money. There's reallocated from a different section of the housing budget that wasn't necessarily being utilized. And so, asked to stick it here in a local government contribution fund. It's not a lot of money, but often those requests are not a lot of money. And we very rarely see more than one to two applications per year. So, it gives us a little bit of flexibility to be able to highly, highly, highly leverage a very minor investment, $100,000 into a $30 million project. But that $100,000 gives extra points that can push an application into the funded column versus the not funded column. I like to leverage numbers at that level. There we go. All right. CREATE 3, create a dedicated funding source for affordable housing and Flagstaff. And while this is not an ongoing funding source, we are incredibly grateful to see one-time monies coming into this. And we requested money for land acquisition/unit preservation. That is, oh, I switched screens. That is coming to this from funds that were allocated to, there it is. This $500,000 comes from ARPA money that was allocated to help with the housing emergency. And it's been sitting there. And we're allocating it towards land acquisition/unit preservation. Sometimes, people come to us with opportunities to purchase land. We used to have a fund to do that. We slowly spent it down until it was not there anymore. And so, now we have an ability to respond to opportunities that may present themselves as we go through the year. Earlier this morning, I talked about the Community Home Buyer Assistance Program. This program income coming right back into that program and going out. And then, I put the next line underneath it, bond programs, home buyer assistance, 3 million. I put those together so I could tell you that we have the CHAP funding program income coming in, which will carry us through, likely, the time period where we're putting in the home buyer assistance program with bond funds. So, you're probably like, why 3, not 7? Well, you don't anticipate spending millions and millions of dollars a year. We just don't have housing stock turnover in our community like that. And so, we put in a happy 3 million into this category, not knowing fully what that's going to look like. And then, rental incentive bond program, thank you for your allocations to this, not to this, but to Foundation for Senior Living for the projects downtown. So, that money will not be spent by June 30. So, we're bringing it forward in this coming year. And then, also, there was the 3 million identified in the bond program for adaptive reuse. We went ahead and programmed that into this year, not knowing if we're going to get there or not. However, we can't spend it. We can't get there if it's not in the budget. So, that's our piece there. Yes, ma'am?
Do you have anything in mind in terms of the unit preservation? I know some of the LIHTC projects are coming up, and we're likely to lose that affordability.
Thank you for the question. So, yes, that has been part of that thought. 500,000 is not going to touch what that needs. But if we can leverage within that, that gives us a different seat at the table to have those conversations. The other thing that could come within that unit preservation is if one of our permanently affordable homes is facing foreclosure, and the bank is not willing to wait to line up a new buyer, we can rescue that out of foreclosure and make sure it goes to another eligible buyer, instead of losing that permanently affordable unit to foreclosure. So, it's really a fun to respond to some needs identified during the year.
So, just adding to what the mayor asked on the unit preservation, their availability to use that 500,000 to assist, like a down payment assistance for another agency to acquire, maybe a LIHTC project that's getting ready to go to market rates, to save that, used for.
Thank you for the question. That's part of what we're envisioning, but we're not saying it's going to be this, because we don't have something sitting in front of us that is at the point where we can define it to that point. But yes, that would be a drop in the bucket towards doing that, but certainly something where we could be of assistance. I want to point it at the screen. I see you moving. I'm going. Continuing with investments, prioritize the development of City of Flagstaff-owned land designated for affordable housing. We had an apartment complex years, a few years ago, provide $500,000 in addition to some units within their development. And we set it aside with the thought of RAD. We now have some bond money coming towards RAD. Staff requested, budget team approved. Thank you so much. And a consultant to help us get this going at a level. Justina and I have taken a stab at it. We took a run at it a couple of years ago. We do not have the internal capacity to do what is necessary to move this significantly in the time that it needs to happen. So, thank you for the allocation of a consultant to really carry that water with us, heavy lifting associated with it. And then, ACT 2.4 and 3.1 both have to do with helping the community understand the role housing plays, both with housing as healthcare and as infrastructure within a community. And so, just over $31,000 there to assist us in getting those pitches out, and also to assist us with branding our programs. We don't, I mean, we have a logo, but we have never pursued what is a consistent representation of our efforts that you see, such as with sustainability, or the airport, or Parks and Rec. We need to move in that direction to help your efforts be better recognized in the community when they take place. I think that's my last one. See, Jeff didn't even walk towards the whole door yet. He just fidgeted a little bit. I have one more.
I had a comment. I'm really excited to see that you're going and looking at a consultant to help us move these things forward, see with our first shortage, and special departments like that. It's really great to see that we're thinking outside of the box and saying, okay, we don't have the capacity right now with our staffing. Let's bring in a consultant so we can still move these priorities forward. So, thank you.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. It's one of those things that I've always pictured us doing all by ourselves. I'm fiercely independent. I don't know if anybody's met me before, but asking for help in this spot makes the most sense. It's a huge project, and it's something you can really use, especially the external knowledge coming in surrounding those financing options. No, thank you. Continuing 10-year plan investments, reduce homelessness in Flagstaff community and seek housing solutions for all. Create a housing navigator or advocate position to assist landlords in housing-challenged populations is actually a specific call-out within that larger goal. Thank you. The navigator position is no longer one-time funded. It is funded on an ongoing basis. The new one started April 15th. I'm very excited about the skill set he brings to the table. Additionally, with this position coming forward as an ongoing position shared between general fund and housing authority funds, is the budget team, we had a request for staff, I bring this up because I heard folks mention earlier, but the budget team, while not able to fund another position within housing, did set aside $25,000 to assist us with obtaining. aside $25,000 to assist us with obtaining temp in order to help carry some of that administrative type water and tasks forward, freeing up our staff to be able to do higher skilled housing things. And so while there isn't a position coming to help us with that, there is a nod that that need exists and attention given to one way to work to address those things. That's something else we're grateful for. I threw the graphic on the tenure housing plan, reporting and implementation cycle up here to remind you that we will be in front of you in June with a new annual implementation plan for the upcoming fiscal year. That draft will go to the Housing Commission in May and then come to you in June for a head nod of our efforts moving forward. There are things in there that aren't directly tied to allocation of funding. So while this addresses things within the tenure plan, you'll see those in the implementation plan. There's also other items that are within there that are not tied to direct allocations of funding.
I'm guessing that the housing navigator works closely with Front Door.
Mayor, absolutely. Our housing navigator attends case conferencing weekly to be able to bring any resources we may have forward and to stay on top of what the other housing needs within the community are. See people smiling. So maybe another section before lunch? People don't.
How's it doing? So who is starting to get hangry? Anyone? No one?
Wow.
Actually, there's lunch, lunches here. So we're going to go ahead and break for lunch. Let's do. Anyway, let's do about 40 minutes. We have a little bit of extra time to kill. So let's come back at 15 after. Sound good? About 15? All right, let's do it.
I hope everybody had a nice lunch and I hope you're not too sleepy. I think there's there are cookies in the back. Then Amy Hagan's coming up next, so she'll wake you.
She'll wake you.
So this is, this is just a couple of really brief slides, but just a reminder that we did have our capital improvement project retreat on March 28. It was a whole day that we went through pretty much every project that is our capital improvement program. If you remember, Scott Overton started the day with that great story, the history of Flagstaff's water system. A great start to the day. And then we went through pretty much everything that our staff is. Kind of since that time, we've been working on the numbers, revising some of the projects, making sure that we've kind of programmed projects in the right years. And we've been doing a lot of work since that time. This is. Just as a summary, this is a capital improvement program broken out into our sections. During the discussion that we had on the 28th, there was a conversation about the Indigenous Community Cultural Center. That's why Amy and Rose are here next to kind of go into that project a little more. That was an item that council wanted to discuss in more detail. But as you can see, this is a really, really big list and a big task. Some of the things that we wanted to just remind council that, I think many of you know that we're embarking upon many years of significant capital projects. And, you know, just giving that reminder to the community, we're trying to do it as often as we possibly can. Just a reminder that while these projects are difficult and they're difficult in the community, they're really needed projects and important projects for Flagstaff. Our obligated expenditures in our capital improvement program is this year and next year is approximately 388 million, so near 400 million, so a lot of funding. Staff, as I mentioned, we've been going through the projects and making sure that, you know, we are able to deliver what we're putting before council and we feel very good about that right now. We'll do our best to ensure transparency through this process and bring things regularly back to council and to get feedback on these projects. I think one of the things we we ask of you is that council supports, that we would ask your support for our timely deliverables as budgeted. And you've been amazing at getting these projects through. But if you do have a question on something, kind of the sooner the better to answer that. And. We've got a little discussion about the next item. Our staff capacity is strained and we all know that, not only in our project management side of the house, but also kind of in our internal services side of the house. I will say, just an update from this morning's discussion on the project manager specifically is that we, while we do have a lot of positions open, we are making some progress and seeing more applicants, more applicants coming from the private sector, other organizations. Just last week, the governor actually sent out a directive to state agencies that basically put a hiring place on the state level, asked agencies to look at cuts. So I think that's going to, going to help our recruitment efforts. But, you know, I think just know that we are working on this and obviously we're going to have to spend the time to get staff, you know, trained and get them up to speed on projects, but we're definitely making progress. And just thanks to finance and HR for, for everything they're doing to help with our hiring. And finally, I said this at the beginning, but, you know, all of these projects are included in our capital improvement program. Upon completion, there are going to be significant milestones for Flagstaff, just a very heavy milestone, just an amazing legacy for all of you and this team that's working on these projects. So on that, I mentioned we're going to give an update on the Indigenous Community Cultural Center. I'm going to turn it over to Amy and to Rose.
Thank you, Joanne. Good afternoon, everyone. And none of this is possible without help from the one, the only Ms. Rose Tohe, big time. So, of course, of course. So let's talk about what we have going on right now. So that is this fiscal year, so that's in fiscal year 2320, where PROS was funded with $100,000 to continue to do further mitigation, remediation, exploration, you name it. So the perimeter fence removed, gone. If you haven't gone to go see what the space looks like, yep, thank you, Ms. Neiman. Looks amazing out there. And it looks completely different. So gone. That was roughly about 21, a little over $21,000 of that 100 to have that fence removed and hauled away. We've been working on some water line repairs, including with the Water Services Department. So thank you, Water Services, for helping out with that. Plus going, working through some of those obstacles with a local plumber, too, just to ensure that all the connections are A-OK at the future Indigenous Community Cultural Center. Just received quotes from two contractors or vendors to do the facility systems assessment on the building itself. That will be under $10,000, maybe around seven. That'll give us a clear guidebook on everything structural with the building. I know there's not fire suppression system inside, so what might be needed for that? Everything mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and then something else on that, too. So I'm really excited to get that because that document is going to assist Rose and myself big time on what we need to do next. We're also exploring with IT, thank you, everyone in IT that's been helping with this, with an infrastructure relocation. Go figure, the city has a hub inside the future Indigenous Community Cultural Center that feeds the sustainability offices as well as the Park Shop and the Thorpe Softball Complex concession stand. So we're figuring out how to relocate that so that way we still have our city operations outside of this, the future use of this building. That's estimated to expand anywhere from maybe 15,000 to 60, depending on the type of IT infrastructure we do. Our choices would be a microwave tower. There happens to be a clear view of Mount Eldon and those amenities to be able to connect to. We could go underground with a fiber optic line, which would be more expensive. We're trying to figure that out right now with IT. Then, once we hit some of those milestones, Rose and I will be working with procurement on a request for proposal for an interested and invested partner to basically create the Indigenous Community Cultural Center. Right? So really excited about all of that. Any questions on what's going on right now? Yes, Mayor?
What's the expected timeline?
For which part?
For all of us.
Since there's only one completed. Pretty almost complete on any water or sewer checks and balances. Have the facility assessment occur by middle of May. So actually physically have it done and then have that report because that will then help Rose and I complete kind of a scope of work, if you will, for this request for proposal. The IT piece, I also think whatever we decide to do there can occur this fiscal year. I think Rose and I have a goal of trying to get this request for proposal out by the end of this fiscal year, depending on procurement's workflow, which is a heavy workflow. So maybe it's sometime this summer.
And you think that the $100,000 cover?
It will, yes, absolutely. And whatever's left over, we'll make sure to carry forward the next fiscal year because, oh yeah, I have to point that way, don't I? Because next fiscal year, there's $200,000. I didn't go too far. You guys want me to talk about that? And. $200,000 next fiscal year. And this is where we're going to need some interaction right now with city council with both Rose and myself. So we have some of those items that we'll get going. We'll get a request for proposal out, but then what? What do we do next? PROS does have $200,000 for whether there's future repairs, future remodeling, future whatever, we don't know, or seed money in a partnership with that interested, interested party with a respondent from that request for proposal. You know, but to get there, we need the results of what that request for proposal entails. Who are those interested potential partners out there? The grant opportunities to explore to match with that $200,000, maybe, who knows? And then I want to talk about ideas, like what do we provide now? This came up in our capital retreat. So do we use the $200,000 to provide something now or as in after July 1st? And that's what we need to talk about. What does that mean? We had one idea during the capital retreat of a tent. Do we buy a tent? And Rose and I have talked about this. We can go buy a tent, but then what? There's no floor for underneath the tent. There's no electricity. There's no plumbing to the tent. There's no bathroom. So is that really what we want to do? And if so, we'll figure it out, right? Or do we want to take $200,000 and remodel something inside the building where there's, maybe it's not as rudimentary as other parts of that building today and utilize that? Who wants to go first? You can fight over it.
Briefly, just a thought, we're spending $2 million on windows at the library. Any way to save money by doubling up on doing what probably needs to happen at the cultural center, which is a similar type of architecture, if I remember correctly?
Similar aged architecture, for sure. Possibly.
Too far ahead.
Maybe, you know, an inside, I mean, maybe it's helpful if we did a tour of the space. Some of us have been in there, but there is a certain part of the space that is more habitable than others, where it does have drywalled in offices, bathrooms, some things like that. Then there's the space that probably will take a lot more remediation than that side. Including windows and HVAC, you name it, is going to be needed in this location. Can you go back? I can, thank. There you go.
So that's not shadowing. It's a green building now instead of the cream.
Oh, yeah. Do you want to hit up these photos? Sure, let me see what it looks like. That was the sustainability offices with the fence up. Sustainability offices have since gone through a handful of remodels. They have a mural painted on the south side of the wall and painted green. So that's the same space, just with the fence down.
But that's not the, it's not the cultural center.
It is not, no. Show the fence that came down. That was my next question is like. I was like, oh, that's beautiful. They did so much work already. Confuse you. Look out onto the urban trail system in the Francis Short Duck Pond from the north side of the future Indigenous Community Cultural Center. I'm sure we could go to a map if we need to see the building.
So when we do the facilities systems assessment, anticipate, we need a lot of we do done on there. So it's not just another 200,000. But, you know, I want to talk about the tent thing and maybe have, you know, a separate meeting for that because our church, when we were moving, did one of those big circus tents and we had dirt flowers. I mean, I think that, you know, that's not a deterrent. And I know that in the Indigenous Commission meetings, as well as just Mark with his classroom, they are so anxious to get out there. So I would really like, maybe if we did a walkthrough or something, talk about, I know they want it sooner than later, but what, what can we do in the interim to help cultivate and maintain that excitement? You know, what parts can we let the youth? You know, I know they're planting seeds, you know, for plants that they want to put out there. Maybe a hybrid, what do we do in the interim? That a couple of years down the line is need to be occupied, but I don't want to poo-poo the tent I did because except for high winds, a very useful purpose. And, you know, just maybe drawing from the indigenous, indigenous community to say, would that be something you're excited about or are you awake? Do we just want to focus on what the youth want to do and come for right now? So Rose, do you have any input on that right now or?
Well, thank you, council member. I think that with the work with and how much of that do we want to put now, spend towards something that is not going to be needed all the time? And then, you know, with the summer coming, that's probably a good idea. And the only thing about it is Amy did bring up bathroom situation, which is probably going to be needed if there's activity going on with, you know, cleaning up and whatever needs to be done around the building. So those things, we want to make sure that we support the youth energy around this. And however, you know, we just need to make sure that there's a balance there to that money, do we really want to spend? And then also support whatever the students really want to do, the youth group want. So that's why I take into that. And, and I assume that's why we're trying to really get this RFP going so that we at least identify who the partner's going to be, the city. And we're hopeful that, you know, to move and have the partner bring in some money, buy for funds and really partner with the city to address a lot of these other needs, windows and all the other things that need to happen to the building.
I'd really like to hear from the youth and maybe go outside the city for partnership on tents and have very elaborate porta potties now.
I was just on a PNC meeting last night and I'm talking about this.
And from them because they have, I'm not saying elders don't have the same excitement, but they really have a lot of generated excitement. If we heard really a vision from them and then went out and said, this is our youth and we could go into other agencies, maybe some tribes and say, you know, temporarily, you know, what do you think? And it's important.
I think that kind of partnership is really critical, too, even before the RFP goes up because then we have people who are ready to stand behind. But also the youth also has some guidance from the elders on what. But also the youth group also has some guidance from the elders on what like to, what they'd like to happen.
And we're working with that youth group right now, Councilmember Mathews and for everyone else. So we have, uh. Located with, they've relocated and provided space in that greenhouse onsite that parks germinates our pollinator plants. So there's a space there for all of the, um, plantings that the youth group is doing. And they're building, um, the group is building onsite some planter boxes that can be mobile that then the plants can transport into those. From the greenhouse and we're also working with, uh, Stephen Thompson in sustainability and the volunteer. Form, um, for any other activities outside of the physical building itself onsite. So that way we can continue the efforts there with that group.
Um, Councilmember House has a question slash comment.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, and actually I think it was kind of addressed in what, uh, Amy and Rose just shared. My, my question was going to be about how much, um, we were able to, um. Both engage with the youth already and what they'd like to see happen there over this interim period. And, um, any ways to activate that space. So hearing that about utilizing the green, um. The greenhouse and, and building those planters, it would be great to see some sort of summer programming. Uh, whether that was in a collaboration between Proz and, um, like the Indigenous Circle or the Indigenous Commission. Um, but to activate that space through the summer as that outdoor. Um, recreation and cultural connection space that has been talked about a lot already. Um, I, I would love to see us be able to do that and show both, um. That we're actively working on this and to show the, um, the, but the possibilities that will happen as we start to. Uh, develop this, this center, um, even more into the future. So just any ways to activate that now and, uh, have that be reflective of the possibilities going into the future is I think. Going to be phenomenal.
Sweet, cats. I like the suggestions so far. I'm wondering if we can do a field trip out there. I've been out there. But I could use a refresher so that I can see the space and we can have a better discussion about.
Absolutely. I know we're hosting the Indigenous Commission next week on my weeks, right?
Yeah, I'm what I say that at their usual meeting, they're going to go take a tour.
We're going to be there. We could also, we've suggested it to the Parks and Recreation Commission as well. If they would like to, um, hold one of our commission meetings there or just tour it as a commission meeting. And I'm happy to, um, take any council members, as long as obviously we don't have a quorum on that, uh, to go visit the site too.
And so the commission is meeting next Wednesday.
That's next Wednesday at noon time, May 1st.
Switch. Any other conversation or direction regarding this two hundred thousand dollars that will be available come July 1st? That we can have staff continue to explore the tent idea that we can continue to explore, price out. We'll have that facility assessment by then. So we'll know whether there's some immediate suggestions on anything to do. Repair wise or remediation wise to the building itself. And can compare those two or any other suggestions because Proz. Has a, has five million dollars for that concept plan, not necessarily for the future ICCC, but Thorpe Park itself. Uh, roughly nine years from now. I don't know if I'll be here, but.
It's on my calendar on the meeting next Wednesday that it's on tour.
Yeah, it's, it's, I'll send it out like today or tomorrow morning.
So do we know what we're going to do with this Indigenous Center? Is it going to be classrooms or a big meeting room or? Is that all to be determined?
All be to TBD.
So we probably don't want to spend too much money on what we're going to do. It's going to be just. Once we go to the permanent plan. Seem we want to kind of prioritize planning. Implementing the permanent solution as opposed to, you know, putting a lot of money into, well, this will be up for three months or whatever. And then it's gone, you know, just a thought.
Um, thanks for the discussion and thank you for all the efforts. Uh, and I'm sorry I walked in halfway through the discussion. So maybe this has already been addressed. Uh, we don't want to do anything to curb the enthusiasm that's already happening. Wonderful to see, but I do think there's going to be a lot of pressure and yet, and there may be pressure in the upcoming tour, uh, to see. Um, use of that building, the inside of the building before we're ready to, to see that used. We really need to get through the RFP process, need to get through the building assessment process. Um, the building needs a little bit of TLC before it can be occupied from within. I just want to put that out there that it is in part, uh, underlying why there are suggestions about a tent and some of this outdoor activation. Because that, that is a way to keep the enthusiasm, uh, present while trying to also. You know, keep from using the inside of the building, which we're just not ready for. Hope that makes sense.
Thank you. Any other questions or conversation regarding the funds for next year? All right, SPK, I'm taking over. Just kidding. I believe we have the one, the only SPK next.
All right.
Grants, grants, grants.
Internal funding opportunities. All right.
Livelyness here. Grants, grants, appropriations, right? We like them. Bear likes them. Lots of emails from her, everybody else, right? So grants, um, I think everybody knows me, Stacy Ruckler, eggs, grants. So grants are very exciting. Um, we're very aggressive at them. Are very highly competitive with them. We, uh, do a little bit, a little bit about our office real quick as we have a grants and contracts manager, Megan Dale's who was just hired. We have three grants and contract specialists. They're experts in their field. They, um, do a lot of research. They do a little bit of grant seeking. We get a lot of grant emails to, sent to us. We also get a daily. We're during, um, just to kind of walk through a little bit about the grants and how we. More than do our grants for the city. And then I'm going to show you the, the big wild slide of what we have in FY 25. Um, and then we'll turn it over and we'll talk about some projects, but. Um, we do a, uh, pre-proposal development, um, part of the life cycle of the grant. And that is really looking at projects. We're looking at things that fit our council goals, our, our performance base, um, budgeting. We look at grants that are eligible for the city. Remember grants, um, we have to be careful that they're not ongoing. Um, they're not consistent revenue source for us either. So we look at, we have a lot of one-time grants, ongoing grants. We have to be careful about because they require staff, they might require maintenance. Um, so we're, we're consistently looking at that. We wish all grants were a hundred percent. A lot of them aren't. They're a lot seventy-five, fifty percent. Um, and so we, we make sure that we budget all our grants and we have our match available. We have that appropriations. So there's, um, competitive grants. We have state grants, local grants, foundation grants. We have entitlement grants, formula grants. Our competitive grants that are out there are your highest dollars. That's the big ones. That's the big bag of cash that we're trying to go for. Um, and then our office will, once we, we've kind of gone through that proposal development phase, we'll jump into the pre-award phase. This is the application phase of the project. So our office will work with the city staff. Or the grant writer, we don't have a grant writer. I'm not a grant writer. Really more in the grants management side. Um, we hire outside grant writers, but our staff are writing these grants. They know it best. They are experts in their fields. They're doing an excellent job writing the narrative. Our office will peer review those grants, will help package the certifications. We'll work with our lobbyists and we'll get congressional letters of support. But we're really helping them package that up. And we're hitting those criterias in that grant application. And Laura, you're very familiar with grants. You've got to hit the grant criteria, hit the highest point that you can. Submit that grant through, um, various portals, grants.gov. We, um, make sure that we're trying to hit to be highly recommended. So what happens in that grant application? It goes to a peer review panel at the federal level most often or the state level. And they're looking at that grant application and they're trying to get you to highly recommend. Not recommended, you're out. So we want to do everything we can and to package up that grant application to get to highly recommended. Here's the other kicker about this. We'll get a, we'll get a notice that we were highly recommended, but we weren't funded. Why is that? You in the cut line, you, they went through all the money and you were just below that. And so we try again the next year, we do a evaluation session. Why we didn't get it, where we, where we could get some more points, even though we may be highly recommended, but we want to get in that very top category. So that's kind of the pre-award stage and application phase. And, um, I, I tell you, you, you have some amazing division staff that are writing and applying for these grants together as a team. We're very much a team. Um, and then we get to, we sit and we wait. We wait for that, that grant award. Um, the City of Flagstaff has a gold star. Let me tell you, I hear it all the time from the federal agency. Uh, they love the City of Flagstaff. We're very compliant. We do what we're supposed to do with our grants. We, we spend it appropriately, we comply and, um, and that's a good thing because I'll get calls from the federal agency that said, we'll say, hey, we got this grant opportunity open. You guys should apply. That's a good place to be as a City of Flagstaff to be able to, to have those federal agencies do that. Our offices, they lays on a lot with the federal agency because we talk, grant speak, we, we talk their language. And so a lot of times we're that, that agency. And then we get the award. Yay, right? We're excited. We received that bag of cash. We received the award. With that award, there comes a lot of strings. We all know that. It comes with a lot of, a lot of compliance, a lot of regulations that are required with it. Um, and that award phase, our staff is all in, is really, really all in at that, at that award phase. We're meeting with the staff. We're doing post-award meetings. We're going through page by page of that grant application. Working, we make sure that we're involving procurement. If it's a service or an equipment. Finances involved, legals reviewing that grant agreement. We're doing the negotiations on that grant agreement to make any changes. That fit or any budget that maybe needs some changes on it. But we're really in that, 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 that post-award phase and going through it to make sure that we can deliver this project. We can deliver it on time within what's called, you'll hear a term in grants called the POP, which is the period of performance. That comes when we get that post-award, when we get that award agreement. And that period of performance is the window that you can spend your money. You can't spend it before. You can't, you know, spend it past the deadline unless you do an extension. So. So we're spending a lot of time with the staff, bringing in that full team at that post-award phase. Our office also is involved in that implementation with the staff. We're working with procurement. We're working to make sure that our bid documents have all the grant provisions that we're. We're following all the compliance within that grant. And then we're doing monitoring and oversight. We're working with finance has a very strong team. Yay, finance, by the way. Do an excellent job by grant tracking. We assign a specific grant account. We, um, they do all the reimbursement requests, but I'm reviewing all those. Um, with them and making sure that we're following the budget. And then the staff, that's the grant project rep that's out in the field doing the actual implementation. They're doing performance reporting and they're sending that to us and we're looking at that information together. Um, I review all those performance reports and financial reports and, um, it's really important as part of that grant oversight and monitoring. Because I might get a report from the finances says zero for this quarter. And I get a performance report from, um, a stormwater or water services grant that says we're fifty percent complete. And then I'm like, whoa, something's wrong, right? I, something, some, a red flag, right? So we know, so I'm able to kind of monitor my staff is to kind of see. Review and do that oversight and, and kind of, kind of watch all the grants. We have, um, almost two hundred active grants right now. Very, very aggressive, very, very successful, but our resources and capacity, we've talked about that, Joanne did. The organization's tight. So grant money is great. It helps leverage our projects where I, I can't think of a project out there that doesn't have some probably grant. Uh, tied to it because it's a way for us to help, um, leverage the federal and state money and get our projects done. Um, and then we'll, we'll, we'll work through the implementation. I'll be out in the field with the staff. I'm walking the projects, whatever it might be. Um, I'll make sure the fire truck is there that, yeah, I just, we saw the fire truck. It, it actually came and it's actually, we did buy it. And we have it. So I could tell the auditor, yeah, I, I saw the fire truck that we got the grant fund with. Um, and then we work towards, um, closeout and audit. And, um, I know Councilmember Mathews, you're very familiar with the audit process. So we'll work with, um, we'll work with the team to make sure that we have done the closeout part of it. We have all the deliverables. Do we receive the final payment? Do we, did we, um, uh, complete the project on time, on budget? Um, and, um, and succeed in, in completing that project within compliance. And I'll tell you, the, um, compliance side of grants is huge. If, um, if we get an audit finding, um, on one grant, the whole city gets it. And we don't want to be that. Our audits go to the federal agency. They look at those audits. They see we're a low risk auditee. They want to fund those agencies. They're looking at past history. That's why we're getting that gold star that our, it's not me. Let me tell you, this is a team, 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 big team, citywide effort. Um, to make sure that we are in compliance with our grant funds, especially, you know, we just Jenny, uh. We just submitted a fifty-seven million dollar grant, the highest in my career here, if we get that. Um, and I've, we just got the downtown mile and some other ones. So. So, um, pretty, pretty awesome if we can get these big grants, but we also have to stay in, in compliance with them to make sure. That the funders want to fund us. So, um, it's, um, it's pretty exciting. And I'll tell you, our lobbyist rocks, you know, uh, Bob Holmes, he sends me emails all the time. Hey, here's an opportunity. I know, Mary, you're very, um, proactive on the grants and, and others in the room will send us opportunities to look at and. And make sure that we can go for it. But I think what we have to start doing is maybe look a little more strategic and start looking this next year. Rick and I have talked quite a bit about it to, to do a little more strategic planning on some of our grants, just because of the resource and capacity of them. Um, but we'll finalize, we'll work with our outside auditors, um, and, and closely with finance and go through the audit process and make sure that. We're, um, complying, not just financially, but the performance of grants and the compliance with grants. And we'll make sure that, um, that there's no, um, document or something that we did not, we get a finding on. So. And we're always looking at internal controls and things that we can enhance our grant process. So that's a little bit about the grant lifecycle and what our office does. We're very busy and we love our grants. And which one do I hit to go down? One on the right. This one. So that's, that's your upcoming grant, um, year. Um, with all, between all the divisions, federal and state and some of fed appropriations. Um, probably include some community directed spending and, um, there will be a slide on that that we'll talk about later. But, um, but that's a, that's a big dollar amount, um, there at the seventy-six million. And by, by the divisions, these are budgeted grant revenues. Remember we budget all our grants. So we have the expenditure appropriations. Um, we do have grants that come up in the year that we didn't know about and we didn't budget for. We don't want to say no to applying for them. So the division has to find where they're going to fund that until the reimbursement comes in. Of course, um, some of these are not, not a hundred percent grants. So we're having to match this with city, city monies. But, um, we're really working hard to, uh, uh, make sure that we get federal, state, local, so that we kind of split that up. Um, airports are really good example where they're, um, ninety percent federal. I'm not going to use ninety-one point six. That's really what the percent is, but. Ninety percent ADOT helps provide five percent and local five percent. So it's really a federal, state and local matching grants. We're leveraging together as an organization, um, together with feds and state. Yeah.
The Flagstaff Housing Authority, is that a new grant or is that part of ongoing funding that we?
Yeah, that's, um, under Sarah's wheelhouse. And Sarah, you might be able to help with that eleven million, where that's coming from? Yeah, that's under Sarah's wheelhouse and Sarah, you might be able to help with that 11 million, where that's coming from?
Largely ongoing, our, our amounts coming from the federal government are usually adjusted annually. Lately, those have been adjusted in the positive direction, but it's dependent on congressional budgeting. So yeah, that's our, our basic ongoing programs, the bulk of that is actually HAP funds, which are housing assistance payments that go out in the community to pay private landlords on behalf of low income tenants.
That's coming.
It also pays our staff and our public housing.
Which is a good point, so that's not just, that's appropriations, other things that are coming into that, that slide, so. I remember appropriations are great, I mean, we want those too, they may not be called a grant. Something like the environmental infrastructure, the 595 program is not a grant program, that's an appropriation to Army Corps. And then they issue it like, like a grant, it still smells like a grant, but it's not a federal listing grant program. But it still is run under our, our wheelhouse to make sure that we're managing that appropriately and that we're spending the funds for its intended purpose.
So on especially new grants that come up and there's always a match component to it, how is that determined? You know, especially early in the year, you get a grant opportunity for a certain project that you could fit into it and then we're going to have to come up with that money. Like where does that come from, do we have set aside money for matching grants or?
That's probably a better question for Brandy and Heidi, but we budget our grant, we budget total project cost, which is your grant plus your match. So you have the whole expenditure appropriation. Usually comes out of that division, but Brandy, you want to?
Yeah, absolutely. So early in, in the budget process, all divisions are asked to put in their budget, their grant planned projects and expenditures. Listing out, you know, what, what they think is the batch requirements, is it a federal, is it a state? And then as part of the budget process this year, we reviewed all those grants as a budget team. And said, yep, we support moving those forward to cover the match on that, so that is built into the budget.
So, so, so it's great, we love our grants and we'll, we'll continue to go for them. But the, the best part and the fun part about all of this is, is yes, it's applying and getting the award, we love to win our, win. And, and succeed in our grants and, and succeed in the closeout of those. But I, but I love to get grants to see our projects get done. I mean, that's what we're here to get, to get our projects done and leverage that, that funding. So this is the fun part and I get to turn it over to Chief Gaylord and some other staff that get to talk about the projects that are getting funded with these grants. I always want to point, doing the same thing, we were pointing the other direction. There you go? All right. There you go, you're up, take it away.
Good afternoon, I'm glad to be here. If you didn't know, there was a wreck in downtown and the 20 minute ride to a luncheon that I was supposed to host took about five minutes. So I feel very fortunate to be back and be here with you. Really proud to tell you about some of these external funding opportunities. You're going to be seeing, I believe it's routing right now and the state is not routing right now.
Stuck, so it'll be the 21st instead.
On the 21st, you're going to see the final document.
I don't know.
Okay, so you're going to be seeing a distribution by the Gordon and Betty Moore Foundation for $250,000 this year. That looks like it's going to be about a 10 year allocation by the foundation to fund some pretty important work in the community. And then the, the elements of that grant are really important for us. And I'll just, if I might take a liberty, one of the problems, we have a crisis in, in our state. In the, excuse me, the insurance premiums that our taxpayers on our homeowners are experiencing. It's insurance premium inflation. In some cases, we're having folks come in and talk to us about why did their insurance for fire go up three times in one year? In many other cases, why am I being canceled and I can't find insurance? It's affecting our people's ability to get mortgages because they can't insure the mortgage because they can't obtain owner insurance. And so it's a problem in all the forested areas. Here's what the problem is, the insurance company has been getting, just creamed over the last few years with loss. And so the reaction of that is, the way the underwriting is occurring now is, there's Northern Arizona, it's uninsurable. So there's, there's no, absolutely no credit given, 30 years of forestry work in and around the community, there's no credit given to firewise neighborhoods. And so these funds, all these funds will contribute to our efforts. In fact, we were on a meeting yesterday with the fire chiefs from all the forested communities in Northern Arizona. All of us are kind of coming together in a coalition effort to begin to provide better data to the insurance company than just uninsurable. So the educational effort that'll be made available, possible through the, the foundation, the Community Wildfire Defense Grant. That's allowing us on a parcel level to begin to get data about what people are doing to protect their property. As opposed to just painting us red and we're uninsurable. And then the Division of Forestry, this is a really fun little grant, our team has been successful in pulling this together. We're able to assist private property owners to do work on their property to be hardened against wildfire. We can help them pay for that, it's been a really great program. And then the Fire Adapted Communities Learning Network, that's, that's also a good program. We need to put fire on the ground to take care of the forest, reduce our threat. Well, that smoke can sometimes have negative impacts on our citizens. We're able to help provide filters, working with sustainability to help mitigate those health impacts for when that smoke does occur. And we know that prescribed fire smoke is less intense and there's less of it. And if we don't do it and we're dealing with a wildfire that's actually uncontrolled going through the community. So these are some really good examples, we're very proud of it and we got a lot of partners that are assisting us in acquiring these funds and, and a lot of good things are going on right now. Thanks.
I have a question for you on the insurance, because that is a hot topic, people are still finding out about either getting, becoming uninsurable or their rates are going, you know, out of this world. So do you believe in your coalition that's being formed? At what timeline do you go back to the insurance companies and present, you know, what you've done and how it mitigates future fires? And help them assess what is a higher risk or a lower risk?
We're in the coalition forming piece right now. We don't have a timeline on, on how fast we can present our data. Clearance, the insurance companies buy their data, they don't even develop their own underwriting anymore. They buy their data from a handful of companies that, that probably are not taking any effort, they're just looking at the loss. They're not taking any effort to look at what's been done to reduce the risk. We are trying to break into that market that says, here's the real data you should be using. Because there are some communities like ours that have been doing really great work to mitigate for decades. So that's the, that's the challenge, we've got a good list, we've got Arizona Fire Chiefs on board, we're, we're going to be bringing in firefighters of Arizona. And Arizona Fire District, all the political muscle that can support this. But in addition to that, we're really trying to stay out of a regulatory fix, that's what they did in California. And the insurance industry's response to a regulatory fix was they just left the market and are not in California. So we've got a lot of work to do to try to give them better solutions, but we are trying not to regulate them.
Thank you, before I, before I talk about transportation, I'm, I'll just kind of bring you back on the, the fire chief's conversation. I'm currently in the process of closing on a house this week. I have a very difficult time getting homeowners insurance. I, you know, building a house in the new Juniper Points of Division. And I talked to some of the homeowners in there who they used, I was calling their agents. I had one, one agent giving me a quote from Travelers. Before I could, you know, make a decision, he said, Travelers just informed me they're no longer doing new policies in, in Flagstaff. So that one was out the door. I found some agents that used the Hartford Company, so they were able to provide quotes. And then GEICO as well, those are the only two I could get quotes from, somebody that repped Hartford and GEICO.
State Farm is?
I didn't have an agent that was repping State Farm, so I don't know about that, but it was pretty difficult to get in. All right, transportation, talk a little bit about our outside funding. I'm not going to go over the project details because we just had the capital, capital projects retreat. But on the downtown mile, we have almost $48 million in outside funding. In Metro Plan, our, our federal grant, the BNSF and ADOT. So we're doing really well there. That $3 million from ADOT, we were able to leverage those funds, you'll see in a little bit. So we'll see how we use that and how that kind of progresses to other projects. The Lockett Cedar Roundabout, we have the Highway Safety Improvement Grant from ADOT, so $2 million there. That's a, that's a big help for that project that will really help improve that intersection.
Delay on it.
And the Butler Avenue Complete Streets, we were just awarded $9.6 million for a Safe Streets For All Grant. And we were able to take that $3 million from the downtown mile project. And last year during this process, we moved that to the, to this project. It was supposed to be for the three protected or two protected intersections, but we were able to leverage that for three protected intersections. And then the raised pedestrian pathway and bike lanes, so a lot of, lot of good work there. We're also in the process, we submitted a RACE grant for $19 million for the Butler Forestry Improvements. So we should hear about that by the end of June. We also submitted a Safe Streets For All Grant for planning for a little over $2 million. And that's for a Vision Zero Plan and the Transportation Master Plan. So that, we should know about that towards the end of May, so we're, we're fairly confident we'll get that one. So we're doing a lot of good work going after these grants. A big help has been Metro Plan, they, they have been very strategic in helping the city, the county go after grants. They just helped the County Flood Control District get a big, like $15 million protect grant for some drainage. And we're working together too, as like, which, which organization is going after which grant? We don't want to compete with each other, right? So we're doing some really good work there. For plan, we did, for this one, we did a lot of staff and Metro Plan writing of this grant. For the RACE grant that we did on, on Butler and Forest Street, we used our design consultant Burgess and Nyble, they've done that work before for a RACE grant. So we hired them, a lot of work, Metro Plan helping to review, city doing more of the technical reviews. We had Metro Plan going out and helping get the letters of support from, you know, different organizations and, you know, elected officials. So real, real big team effort. The thing you talked about, the question about like, how do we pay for these when they come up? And like from Butler Forest Street, we had that project funded, right? So we're just trying to go after a grant to help supplement that. And if we get it, great, we have money that we can move to another project. These notice of fundings come out and they only give you a couple months at best to reply. So we're really identifying projects we want to go, go after grants for and trying to do some of the work upfront. At least get the project scope done, some graphics. So when we know these grants come out annually, we're a little bit ahead. And then we can just really work on the, the getting the letters of support, benefit cost analysis, things like that, so. But then again, and then obviously Stacy BK's group is helping review everything as well and helping, you know, submit these. But then once you get the grant, you have to do it, right? And we have to have the staffing, so we're kind of watching that as well. That's, that's transportation.
Thank you, thank you. Hey, Vice Mayor, also Shannon Jones, Water Services, continuing on the external funding. Very similar, a lot of this has been discussed through the CIP, but just wanted to highlight a few. Again, focusing on the Dinner Basin, this is a repair and armoring project, waterline has been repaired, functioning, we're continuing to restore and armor the roadway. This is a design build project, pretty exciting stories about watching this project kind of get underway and how that's progressing and some efficiencies. And versatility and how they're able to kind of navigate through, I think, a pretty challenging project. So exciting to see the progress, the progress, the progress they've made and as we begin to ramp up again. This is a reimbursement grant, which means Water Services is fronting the money and then will be reimbursed back from the Department of Forest and Fire Management. We do appreciate their funding. It was a $16.1 million grant. Currently, we did budget half of that, about $8 million, of which $5 million has already been spent. Going into the next fiscal year, we are looking to budget the remaining portion and complete that project. A few others, I know Stacy BK and her team talked about, I think, 200, almost 200 active grants. I guess the amount, we got to be 10 or 15% of those. We keep her busy, she keeps us in line, we appreciate that work. But as she mentioned, some of the other grants, FEMA Hazardous Mitigation Grant Program, 75% federal grant does require 25% city match. Does take about two to four years when you're looking at grant from the grant submission to the award. So you want to make sure that that, that you're allowing that a time for that grant to develop and come in. It's nice when it does and things line up, a few projects listed to that are listed there. Also, the Army Corps of Urban Infrastructure Cooperative, also 75% from the federal with the 25% city match. That one, we're seeing about, takes about two years between the grant submission and award. Couple of projects listed there, the Army Corps.
The projects are these projects that will be completed when we receive the money or they're? Yeah, and when it takes two to four years, when do we expect to receive this money?
I think that's a great question, so the projects listed for these grants, I mean, is our intent to get these projects done? Well, really depending on is the grant funding coming in at the right time when those are due. In the event that the grant funding does not line up with the timing, we have to pivot, we make priority decisions, how do we move, how do we re-strategize to keep those projects going? So again, it does, it is nice when the grant funding aligns with when the project is getting rolled out. If the grant funding lags, we have to reprioritize. I think typically, especially with the Army Corps grants, has been my experiences, we do have a list of several projects in that submission. So one that you will continually hear me talk about is the Lake Mary Sedimentation Basin. That was a grant application through the Army Corps. Two years, right, we were listed, they were looking at us and we were not selected. And that's again, is causing that project to delay. We had to make a hard decision this year where we worked with our, with the team and said, we're going to pull that off the grant listing, we're going to get it done to reprioritize. Which allowed other projects to move up in consideration, but that, that one moves to be funded a different way. Would include some, some of the city match or using some of the debt as we work with the finance team. So sometimes we're looking for that grant application and it doesn't align and the project has to be done. Having a few other projects in place that we could shift the Army Corps focus to funding other things is, is, is the intent. Being very conscious of the amount of time, so if there's something that we have to get done immediately, if you can't get a reimbursement grant where we could pay for it upfront and get reimbursed. You may not want to pick a project that you got to do today, knowing that it may take anywhere from two to You may not want to pick a project that you gotta do today, knowing that it may take anywhere from two to four years to work through that process. So having that forward thinking and trying to be ahead of that curve.
So are these grants that we have been awarded? And when are we expecting to get the?
These have not been awarded. These are grant applications in the process.
I heard it is coming May fifteenth. The Army Corps just emailed and said, um, we got the downtown lateral one. And then we've been waiting for this kill up forever. I've been poking, poking and they said that they hope to have it finalized back.
Thanks. Isn't this Spruce Wash, the Cedar Avenue forward replacement that, that funded through the Proposition Four Four One? I mean, one of the speed of projects, yes, Scott?
Shannon, I can speak up a few more, Greg, sorry. This is Chanka, Stormwater Section Director, and apologies for not being there in person. Um, was hoping to be there, but I know we're running about an hour ahead of time. Um, so that's Spruce Wash at Cedar Avenue. That's one million dollars of extra FEMA funding to supplement our Proposition Four Four One funding. So as you know, we have twenty-six million dollars in Proposition Four Four One for Spruce Wash and, and currently we're tracking about thirty-five to thirty-six million dollars of expected costs. So we are supplementing, uh, that, that property, secondary property tax bond, uh, with grant funding. Uh, and this would be one of those grants. So that has been awarded, correct?
Thank you, Ed. Shannon.
Great question. Thank you. Mayor, we're able to answer your question, you're good. And so, um, that highlights a couple. Again, we have multiple, there's other projects that are listed. Awesome looking, uh, Stacy and her team does a great job of making us aware, keeping those applications in. We did highlight a few. But I do believe that that is our two slides and we will remain available for questions in the rest of the afternoon and we'll turn it over to the airport. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, Brian Gall, Airport Director, here to talk to you a little bit about the external funding source. Uh, funding sources available at the airport, hopefully in the coming fiscal year. Similar to the other presentations we've seen on this subject, these are going to look really familiar. If you've seen our capital improvement presentation earlier. In the FAA world, uh, airports world, most of the grants we receive are for capital improvements. It's much common, much less common to see operational grants, but we will touch on that a little bit, uh, toward the end of the presentation. Um, so first off, we, we do have our store removal equipment building. This is our big, heavy capital project lift. It's been many years, uh, in the making. So we're hoping that we're getting very close here. It's actually out for selection for our construction manager risk right now. Key takeaway on this project, uh, I think we've gone over the details on the capital retreats before. It's a a project to store our store removal equipment in a concise location on the airport and open up some of our existing facilities for their intended uses such as aircraft storage, things like that. Uh, the big thing to note here is it is a roughly twenty-four point eight million dollar project for the construction of that building. And it is divided up, um, into three federal grants. They're going to be providing the funding for that structure. And each of those federal grants also has a matching state grant. Stacy mentioned that we get that. So six total grants for the construction of this building. So it's a really heavy lift from Stacy's team. We appreciate their help very much. And she talked a lot about the different funding, the different requirements that come with those different grants. So with this particular project, we're looking at, um, a entitlement funding. So that's funding that we are allocated for certain, um, applicable projects. That's based on the number of employments or number of passengers we get annually. That's roughly that ninety percent federal funding with a five percent state and local match each. It's also receiving, uh, funding from the bipartisan infrastructure law from the FAA. That's a different funding structure. That's actually a hundred percent federally funded. So we really like those grants. Those grants are, are either in place or already allocated to this. So that's a total of about eleven point seven million. So of that twenty-four or twenty-four to twenty-five million, we have roughly eleven in hand now or will when the project gets started. Now, the last piece, the remaining thirteen million that we need to find is what we're going to be applying for this year. That's in the form of an FAA discretionary grant. So each region within the Federal Aviation Administration gets a certain amount of funding that goes to eligible projects and that is competitive within those regions. So we've been working with our lobbyists. We've been working with Stacy's team. We've been keeping our partners of the FAA aware of this project. Try to advocate for that thirteen point seven million that we need to find. Now, the key thing to remember with this is they will not consider that funding request until we have hard numbers at hand from a contractor and that contractor is selected. So this summer, we need to get, this spring and summer, we need to get that contractor on board, get a final construction number for the project. Then we can apply, uh, for that remaining discretionary funding. That is something that we've included in our packet of legislative priorities for the airports here. So for other grants for this year, um, we do have a state grant for the purchase of property on the north end of the runway. Right now, a portion of the north end of the airfield, including the very end of one of our runways, is actually on Forest Service property that we have an easement with. The FAA really, um, forces airports to try to have direct control over all the property within their boundaries and under the runway protection zones, which is areas intended to basically protect the end of the runways from incompatible development. So that's a two million dollar, uh, state grant with a ten percent local match for a total project cost of two point two million. So we're in fairly early stages of negotiation, negotiations with the Forest Service on what exactly that amount is going to get us, uh, but that grant is currently in place. So for grants that we're going to be requesting funding for, we have a state grant with the Arizona Department of Transportation. We're going to request design for the relocation of taxiway whiskey on the airport. That's the taxiway that goes directly adjacent to the airport terminal. Uh, right now it's incompatible with the current standards for FAA alignment. Uh, basically they don't want to have direct access to a runway from an aircraft parking area. So we're going to shift that, which makes the aircraft take a ninety degree turn. The added bonus is it gives us a little bit more space on the commercial ramp. So if we do have future expansions or larger commercial aircraft coming in, this will help accommodate that in the future. Uh, that funding has not been secured yet. It was on our airport capital improvement plan, which was approved by ADOT, so we will be applying for it. Um, and Stacy mentioned where we try to budget for the grants we expect to get, but there are challenges out there. So everybody loves grants and it is a really cool program that enables us to do what we do. Uh, but they're not always a certainty. For example, we found out this week that the current version of the state budget proposes a sweep of the, um, aviation fund, the state aviation fund, which should take about a third of the state aviation funds budget away. So that doesn't necessarily mean this project will go away, but it is going to be something that if that does come through in the final budget, that our ADOT partners are going to have to take into consideration as they review grants.
Can we not do a land swap with Forest Service?
Um, I think so. I don't believe so. Stacy might be able to answer this.
But they, they didn't have any swap they could really do, but they want the money to go towards desert, right? Um, they really want us to purchase it and so that it could go back into their accounts to help build, you know, facilities and stuff. So. Not interested. And, and, you know, they want to sell it. They don't want to, they, it's like the Lake Mary Treatment Plant. That's the same situation. It's on Forest Service land and they want us, they want to sell that. They don't want to be a part of.
So for a couple of other, um, state grants that we're requesting that are not secured yet, one is a project to, uh, complete some pavement repairs on our airport runway. So people think of runways, I think, we often think of a very large monolithic, lythic piece of pavement. In reality, at most airports, Flagstaff included, they're really built on and extended and widened over the years. So there is a, a number of different pavement sections. What we see as a result of that is different wear, uh, parts were at a different times. So this is a project that we're going to hopefully getting to repair some of the older pavement on the airport runway and making sure that we get the longest service life we can out of that. And the last one we show there is a, a study for the eventual reconstruction of our runway. So like any piece of infrastructure, eventually our runway is going to need to be completely reconstructed. Uh, at this point, I would anticipate that to be at least five years out, hopefully more like fifteen years out. Uh, so we'll get a, a lot of service life out of that runway, but we want to make sure that we're up to date on what that needs to look like when we actually are in the process of doing that construction project. Because one of the FAA requirements is generally that as, um, infrastructure is rebuilt, you have to bring it up to the current standard. And of course, if our runway was originally built in nineteen forty-eight and we've had these projects that have worked on it over the years and expanded it and changed its configuration. We want to make sure, uh, that we are aware of anything that are not in compliance with the latest FAA regulations, because that will of course, impact the cost and timing of the construction. And if there's anything that we feel is inappropriate to try to meet, there is a process where you can request a modification to standards to keep it the way it is. So this is really to, uh, figure that out upfront. Uh, additionally, the FAA has asked airports to consider a new way of analyzing aircraft weight versus pavement strength. So this would be some of the data for all those different pavement sections out there to figure out exactly what the bearing capacity of our runway is for the different type of heavy aircraft that want to come in there. Um, now one thing I'll mention briefly on this is we, you'll notice all these grants that we talked about, much like a lot of our other partners, are capital based. Uh, the airport has, uh, has not traditionally gotten very many operational grants. That's not always true. We did previously receive, uh, about fifty thousand dollars a year from the Department of Homeland Security to help support our law enforcement program at the airport. That's to help provide a city of Flagstaff Police Department presence at the airport. Fortunately, we found out, uh, just within the last month or so, that that grant program was not renewed in the latest funding, uh, bill for the Department of Homeland Security. So at this point, that is another thing that you're going to see on our packet of legislative priorities that we've prepared for the airport. That's of course, a much smaller impact to our budget than say the thirteen million we're trying to find for this removal building, but we just wanted to make you aware that we did at one point have some operational support from our federal partners and that is not going to be in the budget for next fiscal year, at least in its current configuration. And then lastly, uh, for congressionally directed spending requests, in a long way of, of talking about earmarks, uh, we have applied for two different projects. Um, hoping to hear back from, I think, Stacy, is that the one we heard back from today? For this fiscal year? So, um, we are going to be requesting two different, um, two different budget requests associated with that, that funding program. And those are for expansion of the, uh, terminal area and, uh, that'll be a, a minor expansion project to basically allow us to accommodate some larger aircraft. I think we talked in the capital retreat about how we're seeing larger aircraft is kind of becoming the norm in the aircraft industry. Right now, our limiting factor is the size of our hold room and the capacity of our TSA checkpoint. So we have some limited funding requests, uh, for the design of that. Right now, there is some federal funding available through the bipartisan infrastructure law for construction. Unfortunately, if your project's not shovel ready, it doesn't score very well. So we're hoping that we can find just a small budget to get it started so we can get the design work in place, so we can then be very competitive when those, um, requests for construction funding come out. And then the same thing with, uh, some improvements to our terminal apron drainage. Right now, the building roof drains drain out onto the apron where people board the commercial aircraft, which in the wintertime can lead to some icy conditions. So our goal is to try to get that design completed, so we can take that system underground and then be competitive again, uh, once those construction grants are available. Um, so I think that's all I have from the airport. If anybody has any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, I'll be turning it over to Jay.
Again, Mayor and Council, Jenny Newman, Climate Action Section Director. Uh, we've been fairly successful with getting small to moderate amounts of grant external funding this year. Um, for the most part, we are doing paperwork for a lot of these right now. So really like to shout out Megan and Keith and SBK and the entire grants team, um, as well as Patrick and Procurement, because they are the backbone of all of this. Um, they're just such incredible helps to us. Every time we, both on the application side as well as where we are now, in the paperwork side and agreement side. So thanks, grants and contracts and procurement. Um, as you know, um, and we talked about, I believe, last week, two weeks ago, um, the EPA has funded our resilience hub project. Um, this is a partnership program and will come to city council in either late May or early June for approval. We're waiting on EPA review of our work plan right now. Uh, congressionally directed spending fund, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Uh, this is a retrofit program. Um, we are in the kind of home stretch of planning for this program and, and are working with procurement right now to start getting funds out the door. We're doing outreach, um, to kind of line up how to help people really upgrade appliances, homes and equipment. APS, um, our HEPA air filter program is kind of an ongoing program. We do two to three distributions a year. It is in partnership with Wildland Fire. Um, I'm proud to say we will be distributing HEPA air filters starting next week. Um, and this is, you know, we have a variety of, uh, funders for that program, but this was the most recent. Uh, the Energy Efficiency Block Grant Program, this is a formula fund, so we know that we have this funding. Working on the application this week, again, shout outs to Megan and Keith and Stacy. Um, we are going to use this funding to electrify parks, uh, tools and equipment, which we're really excited about. Those have, yeah. Those have emission savings, but they also have some really great savings for our workers, right? From a noise standpoint, from a vibration standpoint. Um, you can imagine kind of, you know, the difference between, you know, a DCH or a gas equipment and some electric equipment. So we're really excited about that. We will also be installing heat pumps in various city facilities. So shout out to Joe and his team. And then the USDA grant, this is a food systems assessment. Um, this is heavily supported by a number of partners. Um, and it really is centered on engagement with the community to create a plan for how to better support our food infrastructure. Um, growing food in Flagstaff is hard, and so how do we support our growers? And yeah, just one of those fantastic projects. In terms of what's coming next, there it is. Um, so this, we have a four million dollar, uh, request for another congressionally directed spending. Um, this is for the Wildcat Hill, uh, Treatment Plant. Um, what we want to do is biochar. Um, and so you've heard us talk a little bit about that for the next grant, but the way that this would work is, is we've really tried to pilot a biochar program at our wastewater treatment plant. We think there's a lot that we can learn and, and this has gone into the sort of Army Corps of Engineers pot of funding for earmarks. Um, there's a lot to learn that we can learn for our wastewater needs, but as well as other folks in Arizona. We're really excited about that one. And finally, um, y'all have heard us talk a bit about this. Um, again, grants team, SBK, uh, this was a huge lift as well as from our partners in stormwater, Shannon Jones, particularly, um, in Wildland Fire, as well as in solid waste. So Evan, um, to really pull together a lot of folks to think about biomass. We have biomass liability, biomass challenges in Flagstaff. Those are either our forest, um, our biosolids or food waste and yard waste that goes into our landfill and creates a ton of emissions and a ton of methane. And so we tried to kind of think about all of these together, think about the innovation that we can do, think about Mark Pitt's development, partnerships with NAU, doing research. Um, to try to pull like, reduce our emissions, that's really important, but probably more important is supporting our friends in Wildland Fire in stormwater, um, oof, not stormwater, sorry Ed. Um, in wastewater treatment, um, and in solid waste. So just really proud of that project and, and a huge shout out to, again, all those.
I'm just going to present, uh, a couple of slides for Sarah Langley. Um, I think all of you saw these, uh, requests on Tuesday, so it's just a reminder. The, uh, congressionally directed spending requests, um, that's what we call it on the Senate side. On the House side, they have a different, um, name. I believe it's Community Project Funding. We have submitted all of these requests to both Senator Sinema and Senator Kelly, and today we found out that Representative Gaiego's portal opened and we had to get them in today. So, um, I know Sarah's been working on that. To get those all submitted today and Congressman Stanton also, his portal will open. Um, I think tomorrow, oh, it, today or tomorrow, and we'll get those submitted if he's taking us outside of his district. Um, just a reminder, these are the requests that, that we've submitted for, um, our appropriations, our congressionally directed spending, uh, the Flagstaff Amtrak Station Platform Improvements. Um, there's the amount and you'll see in parentheses, we have the account. Those are accounts that we select when we're submitting those requests. So that's Department of Transportation. Also, in all of these requests, we have a local match, um, required. We don't know what that local match is at this point, but we, um, obviously are aware and let our finance team know that there's a, a local match required. Um, the Flagstaff Amtrak project is part of the downtown mile, um, and we're hopeful that we will get that one, uh, funded. The Flagstaff Airport Terminal Expansion, Brian just went over that one. But Plaza Vieja, infrastructure improvements, this was a project that we, um, had on our list, but I don't believe had identified funding yet. So we thought this was a good one to submit to, um, to get funding for that project.
You broke it.
Okay. Joanne. So, um, do you remember, um, what it was? There was a previous, um, something through Army Corps of Engineers that Congressman Gaiego's staff reached out to us about, and we submitted something having to do with stormwater, I think. I believe Shan- Shannon, were you in the loop on that one?
Yeah, uh, I think it was actually for in water treatment.
It was, and it was, we had a meeting with her.
Right, yeah.
Submitted something and I am, I never heard a word back.
Huh, okay.
Never, never received an email back. Um, something real quick, Joanne.
Something real quick, Joanne, if I can just jump in on these community-directed spending or a lot of people, there's some confusion, but we submit them, and Sarah's office and team does a great job working with all the staff in my office, and we're reviewing them. But what happens is, once they're selected at that federal level, the congressman or the senator wants to submit and fund that, that once it gets funded at that level, they send it to the appropriate federal agency, and it turns into a grant. And then it comes back to us as a grant. So that's where Joanne was talking, when we don't know what that federal, you know, that 50/50 or 100% grant is going to be, then it goes to that federal level, FEMA or wherever, and they say, okay, here it is now as a grant, you owe 25%. So it's difficult to track really what we're doing, but we don't want to miss the opportunity for this community-directed spending. Thank you.
Question. So is this $4 million from Army Corps? Is it part of that 50 something million from sustainability, biochar? Biochar?
Sustainability did have this on their list, so it's the same project, but it's not the EPA grant. It's separate from the EPA.
Separate. And what's the city match on the EPA grant?
100%. 100%. You know what's interesting is the sustainability grants are all coming in at 100% versus some of the other ones that, you know...
Not 100% match.
No.
That'd be bad.
I might lose my job on that one. I might retire. But yeah, so most of the sustainability ones are coming in 100%. I'm not seeing a lot of 50/50 anymore. They're used, they're getting a little better because of the influx of all the bill money and infrastructure money. We're starting to see 75, 25, 90, 10s, which is great.
Do you feel good about that grant, the 57 million?
Actually, was a Herculean team effort with sustainability, our office, many others, a grant writer. We hit every criteria point. We went through it and, you know, I mean, we spent months, how many months on that prior to this? Four months. I feel good. We've had a few EPA grants in the past. They like the city of Flagstaff, like to see our name in that queue, so.
And then just the last is the Fanning Watts mitigation. We submitted $3 million through FEMA for that project. Just as far as timing goes, we did hear earlier this week that on the Senate side, that we will likely know this week whether those projects have moved forward in the process, and I think the timing of the Washington DC trip next week is a really good one. We haven't heard yet on the House the timing of that, but it seems to be moving pretty quickly. So once we get that word, I'm sure Sarah will send a note out to all of you, and she holds up on that.
Funny team.
And Stacy, thank you. You're awesome.
All right, want to thank Stacy, Gaylord, Paul, Evan, Brian, Jenny and Joanne. Great job. And actually, everyone who presented today. We want to, right now, before we get ready to close up, it's time for public comments. If we have any public comments out there?
Fine, but.
Steve.
I talked to three minutes, Steve.
I was going to say three minutes or as long as Greg's comments last, and I'd go with Greg's comments.
I could never do mine in three minutes.
You know? Okay. Mayor, Council, staff.
Greg.
I've been pretty prolific with sending out some information on population growth. It's very key to everything you're doing. I'd like to walk through very quickly, and I bet I could probably get under Greg's comments, maybe not in three minutes, but we'll give it a shot. Here's my quick rationale. What I handed out was a, for everybody who's not here, Councilwoman House, I handed out the last five decades of population growth for the Arizona MSA, brought to us by this reepproject.org in northern Arizona. What it shows in the 70s, you had 4.4%, and then in the 80s, 2.6%, in the 90s, 1.9%, and in the 2000, first 10 years of this century, 1 and 1/2. In the next 10 years, it was 0.9%. The point is that it's been slowing, right? It's been stepping down every 10 years. Keep that in mind. I bring that, I guess I should, I bring that up because in the presentation done by Carol from Stantec, if I get the name correct, there was a, there was a chart that was published. That chart that was published showed the last 10 years' population growth of Flagstaff 1.4. That's the city, not the MSA I was talking about. Fine, that's a fine number from 2010 to 2020. That's a fine number. The problem is, she's forecasting that for the next 50 years. Okay? So that hasn't happened. In particular, what's important about that is that that's, that gives you a population of 118,000 and a need for new water in the city of Flagstaff, okay? That's a trigger point, okay? So let's go back to presentation on November 28th, given by E. Pollak, a gentleman who is an economist named Danny Court. I spoke to Danny Monday, very nice gentleman. And he confirmed all the information that he shared with you. In particular, the key was on page, I think it was, let me see, on the third page, page five of his presentation, for everybody who got a handout, it says, "The troubling growth process is that the peak population is forecasted to 2040, and then it's going to contract for Flagstaff," okay? Now, I spoke to Danny, I said, Danny, where do you get your numbers? What are you talking about? And he said, well, I get them from the Office of Economic Opportunity of Arizona. And that is this big sheet that you all got that talks about what the next, up to 2060, the population growth is going to be. And for those who don't have it, population for Coconina County, they don't give the city, but they give counties and the state. The state over that period of time is going to grow on an average of 1.15%. The county, 0.15% annually. It peaks out and it's shrinking by the time 26 is here, okay? So I said, okay, that's nice. Let's see if we can talk to some other demographic experts. The U.S. Census Bureau. The U.S. Census Bureau, I got some quick facts for the people here. That was like page two or so, this one here. This is the last 12 years of population growth in city of Flagstaff from the Census Bureau, county, Arizona and the U.S. And the long and short of it, the annual growth for the city of Flagstaff, last 12 years ending 2022, was 1.1%. For the county, it was 0.5%, 5.9%, excuse me. The state, 1.19%, and the United States, 0.059%, okay? All right, that's what happened. Now, what, when the demographers look at this, they look at three things. The total fertility rate, first, deaths, they know pretty damn well, because they've been studying deaths for a long time, the actuaries. And once your fertility rate goes down, it hasn't reversed yet, okay? Country peaked in '07. We are now in this state at 1.66. 2.1 is replacement value, okay? So where are we going to start shrinking? And the third variable, which is very unknown, is immigration. So what the Bureau of Census will produce, and you can go to the webpage, and I have it here, from 23 all the way to 2100, okay? They give you their forecasts. They're assuming that the total fertility rate holds constant where it is today in the country, around 1.6. Not going to go down any lower, let's just keep it there. Deaths, again, they know. And then they have three different immigration scenarios, low, high and medium. Low is the one on the left that says Maine, for those who have a handout. And they also have no immigration. Well, that's not going to happen. So what the, but it shows, if you take a look at the low immigration, it shows we peak as a country in 2044, 2044. If we take the medium immigration number, we peak in 2081. That's very consistent with the Arizona numbers showing the, you know, and Flagstaff numbers peaking at 2040. Not a strong correlation between errors, the population growth of the country, population growth of Arizona and Flagstaff. Traditionally, the last 50 years that I looked, Flagstaff has grown faster, going back to that 4.4 in the 70s, et cetera. So this is important. Let me just wrap this up.
About 45 seconds.
Thank you very much. So if we peak out at 90,000 in 2040, what this means is that we don't need red gap ranch. What this means is, we don't have to spend that money in the CPI. And what it also means, I talked about inflation before, the CPIs are supposed to go up at 4% in that. If it only goes up 2.4, you're saving $80 million. By not building red gap ranches in 10 years, you're saving over 180 million. So this is significant. You've got to take this, from these, these are the professionals. This isn't Steve. These are the professionals. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you, Steve. All right, show them some appreciation. All right, very well. We have just about, just about wrapped up. Before we do so, panel comments from Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, City Manager. Anyone have anything that you'd like to add? Okay, one or two items of business left. Before we leave, I need to get a group picture. So if we, once we adjourn, if we would just kind of, everyone come forward, let me get a group picture of everyone? That'd be great. Remember, remember how this goes. It's two pictures, one where you look serious, like, you know, we get stuff done, and then the other, and we enjoy each other while we're doing it, okay? I'm always in awe when I come to these budget retreats and I get an opportunity to sit and watch how city business is done. So I just want to commend you, compliment you. Thank you very much for all of the hard work that you put in, for your commitment to excellence here in our community. Patrick Lencioni, I gave you a quote earlier today. I love this one. It says, "Team synergy has an extraordinary impact on business results." Every time I spend an afternoon with you, you demonstrate that. So on behalf of our entire community, thank you very much.